Good morning, everyone. Welcome to this continuation of council's budget deliberations for the 2023 operating capital budgets. My apologies for the somewhat late start. I will call us back to order. Mr. Given, I believe was going to perhaps provide an introduction. I don't see him on the screen, but I presume that you might be near visible.
Your worship, I believe you're seeing my screen, which is probably the better part of me today. But you're seeing, should be seeing the title page for the budget presentations. Council, I'm happy to be joining you. I'm sorry, can't be in the room. I'm a little under the weather today and thought it best not to bring my sneezes and coughs into the council chambers with all of you. But we are here for the second portion of the budget discussions, as his worship pointed out. And in terms of process, our agenda for today, I'll discuss a little bit sort of where we are in the overall budgeting process. Then we'll move into the utilities budget presentation. Council went through previously all of the other service areas and discussed a bit about debt and reserves and left utilities over to today. And then we also have some follow up. Council requested information in a couple of different areas, specifically with respect to more detail on one of the positions proposed in the community development department. And for more information about potential solutions to the audio in the Activity Center Multipurpose Hall, and so administration has information for you on those. Following those presentations, we have a section of business arising where council will have an opportunity to go through and make any other additional amendments that they might wish to the budget. Appreciate that you have all had a chance to reflect on the work that you did the week before last. And so you may decide that there are some things that you wanted to change, and we have an opportunity for you to do that today here at the end. As you can see, we've gone through a couple of days of discussions already in November fifteenth and sixteenth. Since then, administration has consolidated those changes into the overall budget. And we're here today for you to receive some additional information and to give direction for additional amendments. And ideally, council would be in a position to finalize all of the amendments that you might like to make to the budget today. And then recommend that amended budget to council for consideration on December sixth. Are there any questions?
I see no hands. I see no hands, Mr. Given. Go ahead.
Thanks, your worship. Well, if that sounds appropriate to everybody, then I believe we'll move into our first section, which is utilities. I believe Mr. Greathead should be in the room there. And we're going to hit the first slide for utilities and John can speak to the overall picture of the utilities area, and I'll speak to the item of a late request. So I'll turn it over to John.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Highlights on the, on the budget as presented. There's an increase going through to reflect the increase in operating in the operating contract of the wastewater treatment plant for this year. And so we need to bring that in as the noise in and out, we need to set your expense. So you see that line there for a hundred and sixty, about thirty five. And yeah, other large ones within our expenses is going to be recycling. It's increased an awful lot. We lost our broker. Previously, our best option for recycling our cardboard was trucking it to Tacoma, Washington. So that's eight hundred kilometers each way. And that plant has stopped accepting our material. There's just been a shift in the providers and that option is no longer accessible to us. So we were receiving a little bit of revenue, but they didn't accept the outside the cost by any means. But it helped and the revenue we're receiving from cardboard recycling has been steadily declining over the years. At one point, it was, you know, it was cost neutral. You know, once when the programs were first started out. But now we're getting as little as sixty dollars a ton on our return this year. Now we are actually paying to ship cardboard to store it in Edmonton. And instead of receiving money, we're now having to pay to have that material stored. And it'll end up being processed on the east coast is our understanding. So we produce about eight thousand tons per year of cardboard. And so that's going to reflect about a hundred thousand dollar increase in cardboard recycling this year. So that's something that's going to have to be reflected in our utilities base going forward. So you do notice that those are the two big ticket items on the operating expense of the utilities. As for our operating budget, you know, I would like to say that we've we've really increased the, the training and the certification level of the department itself. Hats off to Mr. Michaud. He's done a fantastic job since he's taken over the department. We're able to do a lot of our work in-house now as opposed to contracting it out. You may have seen us out in the streets. Most recently, we did a bunch of sewer inspections for a line that was repaired about fifteen, twenty years ago, was replaced. And there were some installation deficiencies that we were able to notice with the use of the sewer crawler camera that we bought last year. When we were looking at this, we had reports and we had to make the assumption that the capital project to remind that section of sewer was going to be about nine hundred thousand dollars. That was just, you know, we had to make the, the assumption that the entire line along that area was defective, but by using the sewer crawler camera and doing inspections, we were able to highlight nine repairs that were urgent this year. And we were able to dig them down and make those repairs one per day for nine days. And our cost on that project came in under about a hundred and twenty thousand. So, you know, I just want to say that the investment that council's made, the tools and the training and stuff is really starting to pay its dividends within that department, along with all the other departments. But I just wanted to, you know, highlight the utilities. I know it's been a contentious issue with the rate increase this last year. And I'm hoping that we're able to prove to the community that this is why we need to, we'll need a further investment in the utility department. So there's, you'll see that we're trying to, to work towards reducing our contracted services over the long term. Again, it's going to take us a while to get to fully be able to take that work in house, but that's what we're, we're working towards. And I think that's pretty much it for the operating budget. But available for, for questions as well. And then there's our capital, five-year capital plan that's attached there for 2023. We need to maintain and keep some of these replacement programs going. We had one repair this year that was noticeable by the Tim Hortons on Patricia Street. And that one repair cost the municipality about thirty-five thousand dollars. Excuse me, to replace one valve. We're also took in the repair at Pyramid Lake. And did that repair and that one came in at under twenty thousand dollars. So as we're doing the work in house, we're noticing savings almost time. You know, using a trench box and we rented a trench box this year, which, you know, tightened up the excavation and it allows to work a lot quicker and a lot safer. We still have on there the hydro rebuilds. We aim to renew about twenty per year. And that's average cost and we just make sure that they're, they're operating quite often. With a beautiful excavation, we're able to tear most of the hydrants and rebuild them from the top down. We have a capital request for the treatment process review and a capital plan. And that's to coincide with their utilities master plan that we're hoping to complete this year. That hundred and fifty thousand is going to be needed for several investigations that we'll have to conduct this part of the utilities master plan. One that as a consideration when we're talking about the ten-year growth of the town. And they're saying that our capacity and our residents couldn't get upwards of ten thousand people in twenty years. We need to make sure that we future group our system. So one of the questions was our contact time for our wiring in a reservoir. You need a twenty-minute time. Our reservoir is just, you know, one cell. There's no baffling in there. And so we're not sure of what that growth will mean for the utilities overall, long-term. So that's going to be there to answer a lot of the questions that we have. And I'm, I'm sure that as we go into the utilities master plan development, we're going to need that area for a lot of these projects and answer a lot of those questions as they arise. In a closed trailer, we're asking for thirty thousand for that. So that's just to keep our tools and supplies and materials safe in our material sites. We're organized. And it'll allow us just to be have that we total behind what we need to with all the gear that's appropriate. So instead of trying to load everything in and out of the shelves at the end of the day and then back on the tractor jobs specific, we can have just a job-ready trailer. Then there's a hundred thousand dollars for the utility master plan and our, our long-term goal. And then a hundred thousand dollars as well is asked for for a four-by-four truck. We need to replace one of our older vehicles. It's well past its service life. Sewer. There's the wastewater treatment plant. That's one point one million dollars in there. So the lateral downsides repairs, that's what I was speaking to previously, what we're able to do with that section of sewer line. There's no much repairs that we are investigating with that crawler camera. And we prioritize the results. We do a risk assessment on each of these incidents and all the, all the problems that we find. And then we, we target the most, the most imperative ones. So we're asking for that to be going on for next year. One other one is a fifty thousand dollar request for the solar farm feasibility study at the wastewater treatment plant. We discussed how I was introduced to a few weeks ago. We know that there's five point five hectare stands available for production. So one of the benefits of this and what we're seeing when we did or had the feasibility study done was that the town has the potential of becoming carbon neutral. There's enough space there that we could over the, over the year offset any electricity that we're using on the grid. So right now there's different methods. We've had the, the numbers that were presented to council. We're the most conservative estimate. We've had this idea assessed a few times and depending on the grant funding, you know, they, they pay off on doing a project there is anywhere. The, the study that council saw was a twenty-five-year return on the investment. And some of them depending on grant funding opportunities and that could be as little as eight years. And then after that, they would be generating revenue for the municipality and it's roughly about four hundred thousand dollars a year worth of electricity that we would be able to sell back to the grid. So that's that, that feasibility study is the next step that's required. We did a quick little just a viability study. The feasibility study would get us to the next point where we know it will flush out everything required, the connections, we'd need the agreements that we would have to enter to be able to sell probably back to the grids and and all of those other steps that are required. And then it would allow us to apply for grant funding and then have a long-term approach to making a green initiative there. And I did some quick math. In the generation that could be achieved at the wastewater treatment plant would be an annual offset of about eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and four kilograms of greenhouse gases. So it is pretty significant. I think that in my mind, that's, that's a project that I think would be very beneficial and it would be very strategic goals of council with the environmental responsibility as well. There we go. And the last big one, I guess, for that to speak to would be a, the bulk water and sandy dump control building. So we're going to replace the sanitary dump at the S block and we're tying that onto the end of the parking lot that we had installed a couple of years ago. We had some issues with the funding. We weren't sure whether the funding was going to be approved carried over a year. We had trouble getting the project off the ground during the COVID times. And it just wasn't feasible. So by the time we got approval back from the province that would extend our grant, our timelines only, we're able to make sure that we get the, the actual sanitary dump portion and the piping and the pad created. And that has to be completed by December thirty-first for us to getting, to getting the grant money. Due to the hurried schedule and the requirements, meaning ordering the parts that it drove the cost up significantly. Like so there's a five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar request to complete the rest of the building and our controls building. We want to move the bulk water station over to our location. I keep it away from the operations building. And due to the employee to crisis, that's, that's what we'll need to carry the project off and, and complete it. Our goal at the end of this is to charge for service and increase our revenue off of our bulk water sales. So right now our bulk water, it's, it's pretty much. I'd say it's a little bit, it's quite uncontrolled on our billing. And the cost to incorporate adequate billing over there when we're looking at relocating the service. You know, I think that would be wasted money. And I think that we need to put it in towards the locational swelling. Just if I go down to the garbage and recycling, the garbage bin replacement program, that's, that's ongoing. We replaced about refurbished about ten of the garbage bins per year. So we've done that. That's actually quite economical for us to take them down and have the worn out metal replaced. So we, we take a load to a three bound at a time to the hall factory in Lockbridge and get them refurbished and recoded and everything. There is a request for sixty thousand dollars for a tin bale as well. Our new recycling processor says that we that they will accept bales tin. That's something that's been hard to find for a long, long time. But we would need a separate bale for that. We couldn't have the cardboard contaminated. If we're going to, unless we're going to be paying more for somebody to receive it. But if the cardboard comes over the contaminated, it costs more and more to process. So that would allow us to process the tin cans, we would get two hundred dollars per one metric ton. So it's not, it's not a great return on, it is an expense for the tin. Currently it gets gathered with the rest of scrap metal. Often the processors don't like it because it's a low-value material. And it's messy and it goes flying everywhere when they have it on the trucks. So, you know, it might be a moderate offset for the scrap metal prices, but again, outside of our control because that's something that's handled by the waste transfer station. So, but just to reply councils, you know, the programs that we're offering, if we're to do it right, we would need that bin, or sorry, that, that bale to be able to do the cans. And I think I should leave it there and available for any questions, council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Grayhill. Counselors, Councilor Demore.
Thank you, worship. Through you to Mr. Greathead, just because it's low hanging and it was the last thing you spoke of. The mountain of tin that's at the transfer station, is that something that we would be handling to crush down and bail? Or is that now in the hands of? Who never takes care of that once it gets there?
Your worship to answer Councilor Demore's question, that we just that gets collected and placed at the waste transfer station. And then parks endeavors to have a scrap metal processor take that tin.
So that's the process you were just referring to, that gets to fly out of the system. Okay. I was, I was wondering what was going to happen or how we could address that and apply to them. You know, at least it's up for an option for the special. Thank you.
Councilor Keller.
Sorry, girlfriend. Thank you, Mary. To Mr. Greathead, I'm curious about the refit of garbage cans in permanent locations for three hundred thousand. It's unfunded. How's that different from the garbage replacement program?
Your worship, to answer Councilor Keller's question, for a long-term solution, we have numerous complaints and concerns and requests for relocations of garbage cans. So if we're actually to invest and set out like concrete pads, we, we had spent there, investigated one can relocation and just to make the site safe to put a garbage can where the neighborhood had requested. It was going to be about twenty-five thousand dollars in concrete work. So that was without somebody, you know, being an engineer or to sketch out the plan or any of that. So, you know, it's, it's amazing how expensive it is right now, but a concrete pad that's suitable for a garbage can can come in running at thirty thousand dollars. So that's, that's why we're in desperate to take as much work in house as we, as we possibly can.
Thank you, Mr. Grayhill.
Councilor Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. My question is about revenue from recycling. Are you talking revenue you get from selling the, potentially selling the cardboard somewhere? Or is that revenue requesting from people that are repaying their recycling?
Worship, I think different owners knowledge that she's, she makes clear all that.
Your worship, through to Councilor Hall. When speaking, there's two different revenue sources when it comes to recycling. And there is the one of selling the product. And then there is the other source of levy, which is the collection and whatnot.
Councilor Wilson.
Just regarding recycling and some development that's happening with the provincial government. I know extended producer responsibility has been approved with with, within the Alberta government and I just wanted to ask operations on how that's going to affect the twenty twenty, twenty, do you see it affecting the twenty twenty-three budget? Well, because it seems like there's quite a big increase. Whereas I would, I would have thought that with EPR, there'd be a decrease.
Worship to answer Councilor Wilson's question. I'm heading down to, excuse me, Edmonton, December first and second, meeting with the Alberta Care and we're at the ANL and UOL General Meeting. We're going to have kind of a high-level debrief on how EPR is going to work. When I was attending the Recycling Council of Alberta, I'm not sure exactly what's going to happen and I think it needs to be flushed out a bit. So I don't predict anything's going to happen really in twenty twenty-three. I figured that twenty twenty-four may involve some big changes, but I think right now we'll be able to be adaptive with what's coming.
If I can, just to add to that, Mr. Greathead's correct, it won't have an impact on the twenty twenty-three budget. The government is saying that EPR won't be fully implemented until twenty twenty-five. So administration is, Mr. Greathead has just said, is really looking at how that's going to work and how it's going to impact us. It is at this time unclear how the province isn't going to intend to roll it out. And so we need to stay on top of that to ensure that A, we understand it and B, that it's going to work for Jasper. But it will not have an impact in the twenty twenty-three or likely twenty twenty-four years. We'll start to see that in twenty twenty-five.
Councilor Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. I just have another question about recycling. Do we charge more for, for amount of recycling we collect from residents or residents? Or is it based on asset value of the home?
Your worship, through to Councilor Hall, I can answer that question. At the moment, it is currently charged out at the same price and it's charged out by per bill. So you can see that in the bylaw on how much it actually is being charged out and reflectively it will change for the next year given the impacts of the changes.
If I may, Mr. Greathead and perhaps fielded by Mrs. Malachuk, I'm not sure. As I read the overall budget, the tax support to operations for twenty twenty-three will be about two point nine million dollars. Can you tell me how much of that is attributable to utilities?
Your worship, may I ask for clarification on the two point nine and where you do not?
Of course. Page twelve of my electronic budget document, which is the operating budget summary. And it shows, if you can find that page.
Thank you, your worship. So that's the operations side of, of and not part and parcel of the utility support. This is just the part and parcel that we spoke about at the last meeting or operations side being that with concerning roads and building maintenance, cemetery is in there. What else? Few others, sorry. Grams. So that's that portion that you're looking at on that page.
So with respect to utilities, which is part of operations, I'm trying to figure out the deficit between the fees that we collect and the amount we spend. And so we have, we have worked to make water and sewer cost recovery, getting somewhere close, but they're not there with respect to garbage or recycling. I'm trying to put a number to how much tax support is now provided for utilities out of our budget.
Your worship, actually, I believe by the end of twenty twenty-two that we should be fully supported by the levies itself and the sales. and the um sales that occur within the utilities. It should not be tax supported at all.
And that includes all utilities. So we're having this discussion on recycling and garbage, for example. And we think by the end of this year.
This year, twenty twenty two.
There will be no tax for it at all.
Correct.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Other questions, Councilor Laxer.
Uh I apologize at being somewhat new. Um I one, I was not clear about this, your uh discussion on the sand dump. It um it can you tell us exactly what that is and uh and its purpose?
Your worship to speak to that uh uh Councilor Laxer's question. The sandy dump or sanitary uh sewer dump is for the trailers and the buses that go through town. And uh that receives it currently our one over at Esblot that's is operated by Parks Canada. Um, they do not run their pump stations with their sandy dump throughout the uh winter months, so they close that down in October and open again in May. Um, there's nowhere for anywhere else to go. Um, so we had applied for a grant um a few years ago uh to relocate uh the sanitary dump um at Esblot. When we were there, uh we had the whole ground retrenching water or retrenching sewer anyways. So it made sense for us to do relocation um of the uh water as well. And the water service, so we're right now, um the work that's going on there, that's gonna be uh trenching in the sewer line, we're gonna be um having a water line in there, but it won't be hooked up. But we're going to complete with the same with the same construction. Gonna bring electrical over and we're going to bring gas over um to the site while we have the one trench open. And then the rest of it is mostly um controlled building. Um our design is uh we had to have something that would be parts improved for the actual building itself. It wasn't like we can just um have it uh an industrial looking shack uh spec. You know that that was part of the focus to um part of our design going forward though is um and once we have the uh the site constructed and then when, you know, again, move the bulk water over there, get it out of the wastewater treatment or the operations building. And um again, start uh having better control and access to that. So we will be able to recoup these costs over uh user fees over the long run.
Uh so there would be user fees for both the sand dump and for for um water, is that correct?
You're right, that's the intent of this.
Councilor Keller Happy and then Councilor Demore.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Uh Mr. Greathead, so this control, where will it be? Is it actually over where the new apartment is? Is is that where it's all gonna be constructed?
Councilor Keller Happy, yes, that's exactly. It's going to be on the southwestward side of the uh Esblot Park block. So you see the construction uh going on there.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Demore.
All right. I'm sure there's a good design there, but just for clarification on everybody. Oh, sorry, that came, your worship, uh through you to to Mr. Greathead. Uh, again, I I appreciate uh you being in front of us today and uh facing the questions. I also appreciate the delivery. There's a lot to uh to take in. Um, one thing that I I did want to clarify with this new construct with the the sandy dump and the bulk water. Uh it may, there might be a little bit more traffic there in the summertime, assuming, I'm not sure how often these things get used on a daily basis, but um my understanding is that um both of these uh initiatives are going to be metered in some sense, so that people that come in, whether it's an RV or a bus uh traveling through, goes to dump, they get charged for it. And then anybody that's uh, you know, providing a service in the community that fills up water trucks and and things like that, go and fill up their bulk water. And uh there's a meter charge for it. And that's what you're saying that that those revenues are gonna help replace the 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 cost on this.
Your worship to speak to uh Councilor Demore's question. Um yeah, uh my intent would be um, you know, to to charge appropriately for our bulk water and for any services that we provide. We uh should, we should be recovering those costs. Um, our current, the current sand dump, um it's old, it's it's not compliant. Uh we don't have long shut facilities, we don't have um it's just not proper. Uh AP wouldn't approve it were we asked, were we to ask them to certify that area. Um so there's regulatory changes as well, um even that have got to be in place. And with this one, um you know, what we're what we're working on installing is somewhere where the bulk water bill. Uh, you know, we're, as we're constructing it, we're burying uh heated lines in there so we can we won't have a problem with ice buildup over the winter. Uh we'll be able to wash down the sanding out appropriately. Um, the intent is to make sure that we're also catching down on polluters. Um, it's amazing uh the number of pictures that we've seen over the years of people, you know, uh blooming and dropping stuff into uh manholes and and that. Um so, you know, our intent is to make sure that we have proper parent control over the site and um, you know, if we're gonna provide a service, I again, I I believe that we should be charging appropriate appropriately for it, because none of these things are are cheap to run.
Thank you.
Councilor Mel.
Thank you, your worship. Um for the benefit of everyone to know where I'm going, uh page twenty nine, which is the five year capital plan uh in the budget package, um and going to some big numbers. Um, I want to understand the carry forward from prior years is three point five million dollars and then below it, we've gone annual capital replacement in twenty twenty three um at the wastewater treatment plant of one point one. And then the next year, three point one. And I just, those are big numbers. Those are around eight million dollars that we're talking about. I'd just like to understand each of the three numbers, what it what it entails. Um, and I guess specifically the question of the carryover from prior years. That's not being funded in this year's tax overall, correct? That's from previous years?
Your worship through to Councilor Mel next. Uh yes, so carry forwards would be um already funded by the prior year, so whether it be supported by some debt, whether it be reserves, whatnot, so follow the structure that was um put in place for the prior year or years. Um, and then to speak a bit about um the carry forward from um sewer for three point five million. Um, that is still some projects that are incomplete uh for the wastewater treatment plant. Um, they're near in completion. Um however, uh it just didn't align for being finished in twenty twenty two um twenty twenty two. Uh so we'll have to move that over. We'll expand as much as we can in the prior or in this year and then only carry over the amount that we have to. So that amount is actually larger than what you'll see when I finally come um with the figures at uh year end, which will be more like February. Um, and then the one point one is continuation of that project. And um I would have to look further into my document on the three point one unless um um Mr. Greathead can allude more to that.
Your worship uh to respond to Councilor Mel next question. Uh, yes, we do have a lot of a lot of high number uh carryovers. Uh, we did have an issue with the centrifuge and I've spoken for almost three years about the centrifuge at the wastewater treatment plant. Um, I think uh the project was held up for for numerous reasons, but I'm gonna and I don't mean to throw anybody under the bus taking, you know, taking accountability for for this. Uh but we did have change in operators, uh actually two changes in operators. So we had um the project initiated, uh and then we had a ten and interim operator um come in for about a year and a half. We had them wrestling with the project. They didn't completely, we only had their most recent operator come in. There was that lag time of them reviewing the plan, uh making sure they understood, you know, the engineering, knowing how to kick it back on. Right now, the centrifuge, um it's probably gonna be arriving in our shop this week. Uh, we were looking at at March or April uh installation. We had some delays, um getting some of the polymer uh mixers and tanks and pumps. Uh, so those just arrived about two weeks ago. And um the control panel, um the electrical control panels, it's kind of a global um issue right now, and those were delayed uh as well. So that's why we're now targeting a spring completion. Um I had hoped to have everything complete uh by now. Um I wish that that project was in my review here, uh but it hasn't made it there yet. Um, we did incur um about thirty to forty thousand dollars, if I recall right, on on the emergency bearing uh replacement for the centrifuge. We had to do a tear down of it because it catastrophically failed. Um, right now, the centrifuge is only uh capable of dewatering to like thirteen percent. Whereas we should be sitting in about the twenty four to twenty seven percentage. Um, it's it's uh really on its lost legs and uh that's as fast as we can spin it about falling apart. Um, also the three point one million dollar going forward. Um, we have some flows from uh the JPL facility. Um, that uh those surges peak about a hundred or about anywhere from nineteen to twenty three times a day as their pump stations enter into our um all, our vault is undersized for those flows. So um what happens is the plant ramps up to maximum capacity. Um, it's hard on our pumps because as everything ramps up and down, you know, you're 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 um drawing a large amperage spike. It's harder on our motors and shortening the lifespan of our motors. Uh, the proposal is to um look into installing a um what I call a header tank or an equalization tank outside of the wastewater treatment plant, so we can harmonize those flows and reduce our um that are there wear and tear on our system. We can have a more uh controlled feed. Uh right now, when we look at the graphs and the trends of the wastewater treatment plant, it's just a bunch of spikes. Um, no longer likes to see spikes. He just like a nice flat line. So we have twenty, you know, sometimes twenty, twenty three of these spikes in a day where the plant, um you know, it gets thrown into at the end of full on and then slowly back down full on. Um so that's something that we've investigated. We've done a hydro, conducted a hydraulic study uh back when I was here with uh Morris Nursefield um doing uh looking for options and how to best um harmonize those flows and reduce the impact. So that's what that large ticket item is uh going forward. Um were we able to flatten those um those spikes? We're looking at um uh an electricity uh cost savings of about a hundred and forty thousand dollars per year. Um, that's what it works out to. I think it's very, very, I believe I've spoken to council previously at our industrial rates. Um, they think there's that ratcheting mechanism, so we're charged at the highest demand that we uh incur uh for the twelve months. So that's, you know, if we bring that ratcheting down and um those spikes down, everything uh drops into place and then it's a savings.
Go ahead, Councilor Mel.
Thank you. Just oh, but thank you for that. Um, very good explanation of of what that that's about. Does this anything happen with the campground or or have we the the affluent coming from the campground, is that now being incorporated or is that also part of the problem with the spikes?
Uh, thank you for the question. We're just digging into that. Um the last two years, we've been um installing some um temporary flow meters and annual monitors uh into the line that comes through ninety three ways that makes up all the whistlers, the sand dump and the um outline accommodations in there. Um, we're starting to get a to see what the impact is, but it's not as significant as much A P dollars. It's more of a steady stream and it mixes in. Uh, part of the, part of the issues will, you know, I think are telling. Uh, so say, and again, all that we might be producing um say forty to sixty liters uh per second of sewage going into the plant, but we only have the flows from uh JPL and it's just the way they they, you know, the pipe buses underneath the river. Um, and then it comes back up, so it acts as an inverted cycle. And um so that can increase our flows by a hundred and ten liters per second. So it's it's quite hard on the plant when we're going from forty to sixty liters per second to a hundred and eighty liters a second and then back down. So it's again, it's hurting the bugs, it's hurting the equipment, it's hurting the process. And it drives the cost up.
Thank you very much for that.
I uh would like to take you a step back, um literally, literally and figuratively. So Councilor Melik has you at page twenty nine. I will back up to page twenty eight and go back to um the previous issue that I raised. And I I just need some clarification. So that page twenty eight, I'm looking at the utility utility summary by object. Um, and local improvement levies, I presume that's mostly streets. Stuff I'm not sure. But it's a little consequence to me right now. But is that what it is?
Um, your worship, local improvement um levies would be, um for instance, we had the local improvement by law that we did up with the parcel servicing. So that would be something that would be considered.
And then the levies, the the large ticket item. Explain what goes into levies.
Um, your worship, that is the amount that is collected through the bylaw. Um, so it's not one offs. Um, if you look at the bylaw, sometimes there's a um um a three hour charge or there's all all sorts of different um charges, you know, additional. But the levies themselves are the amount that are collected by the user by the formula that has been um put in place. So for instance, with for instance, with the water and sewer, it's gonna be the same model so that it equates that um amount to cover the expenses.
Right. So that line item would be a compilation of water rates, sewer rates, garbage fees, recycling fees that our residents pay we collect.
Yes, correct.
All right. So if at the end of this year, utilities are running on a cost recovery basis, that is, let's take it exclusive of recapitalization costs. And I ask that because there is quite an alarming increase if you're a payer um in utility levies between twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. Um, it's like a fourteen percent increase. Um, eight hundred thousand dollars that we will be requesting and collecting from residents. Is that additional eight hundred and then another four hundred and fifty five the year after that? Is that primarily targeted toward reserves or the capital expenditures that we know will become?
Your worship, some of it is towards reserves, some of it also is to venture that we would have to incur for the wastewater treatment plant um going forward. You'll see that after um the twenty twenty four year that we should be um good at the wastewater plant for some time um when it comes to adventure. Um, but it has um a serious impact in the next couple of years yet.
And how then will that increased levy be configured? Will it just be increased to existing fees? Will it just be increased to existing fees?
Yes, it just goes up incrementally for the amount needed in the next year.
All right. Thank you, Paul. Councillor Demond.
I make your line of thinking. I'm trying to make some sense out of a few things and it's kind of convoluted in my mind. So I'm going to branch off on the same line here, I think, part of a pun, if there's any. I'm just looking at the levies and other types of revenue. So we just spoke about recovery on bulk water and sandy dump. We're taking out some adventure towards building that whole system over there. When we start seeing revenues come in from that, where do those land in the revenue summary? In the, well, wherever. And then what does that revenue go towards? Does it pay off the venture or are we, or are we classifying that as revenues to offset offset levies through utilities to the users? Does that make sense? Okay. Does that make sense to council? Okay.
Your worship, through to councillor Demond, I think I understand, yes, it goes to its own, it'll go to its own revenue source pot, say, and it would offset the amount that we would have to collect through utility levy itself. Now, that figure, we don't have a measure to quantify against at the moment. So it is not part and parcel of what we're putting into the budget, and it might be a surplus. We would have to then deal with that at the end of the year and also what would be coming up for the next year, which would be ideal in a twenty twenty-four year, given that there are some more increases. So but yes, it it's, it would have its own separate profit, it would, it's still in that revenue. And in the end, you have as much, you have your revenue that's coming in to offset all of your expenses so that you have a zero net impact to the taxpayers, just covered by the user.
Okay, thank you. And if I just may finish up through through you, your worship. I just did more of a comment than anything. It's just the the line of questioning is is more to clarify for the community on the investment, much like paid parking, you know. We have to go through some pains to to get some revenues in something that's going to benefit the the burden on the stakeholders. Because I want to say taxpayers, but if we're speaking about utilities, you know, the levies are kind of dealt with differently. But hopefully down the road, we'll see some relief on the increases through some initiatives, right? So I do have more on cardboard that when we finish up with this. Thank you.
Councillor Hall.
Thank you. I'm just also trying to understand this, maybe going back to Mayor Ireland's initial question about the increase between twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, we said some will be brought on as debt. So it won't all go towards users? Is that what I understood?
Your worship, through to councillor Hall. So there is an increase in the expense. And the expense would be various different objects, so salaries down to adventure to contracted services, whatnot. That then is offset by the levy. And it it supports is the highest supporting amount that goes towards the you, the the usage of that utility. Is that clear? Not quite sure if I got the, yeah, okay.
Since we're back on the subject. There is a plan, and I've now forgotten, but is it one point six million annually into reserves? Is that the goal of the program?
Your worship, for water and sewer alone, we were looking at getting to over the five years. Yes, one point six seven by twenty twenty-six. Contributing to reserves alone.
Great. And can you tell us what the practical implications would be of extending that timeline? So to get to the one point six seven by twenty-eight or twenty-nine rather than twenty-seven. Would would projects have to be deferred, for example?
Your worship, I would say that it mostly would concern the projects going forward and whether or not we had the funds to support it at that time. And if we did not have funds, then we would have to look at further adventure.
Your worship, if I may, the other, excuse me, the other challenge with extending that timeline is that the one point six million dollars is one point six million dollars in twenty sixteen dollars. That number isn't increasing for inflation. So obviously, one point six million dollars would buy you more back in twenty sixteen than it will in twenty twenty-eight. So administration's five-year phase-in recommendation is still probably behind in terms of the way that inflation will be eating away at the value of that one point six million dollars. So further extending that timeline would further erode the purchasing power of the one point six million dollars. And you'll see on the screen, your worship, we did commit to council and the public to sharing some more information about the capital charge. And so we are in the second year of that five-year phase-in. Budget twenty-three includes a revenue increase of approximately two hundred and sixty thousand dollars over twenty twenty-two in the capital charge. And as you can see here, the capital demands on the system continue to exceed the revenue generated by the capital charge. So in twenty twenty-two, the capital charge for water and sewer combined collected just under six hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And our twenty twenty-two capital expenses in water and sewer were just over three million dollars. Going forward in twenty twenty-three, combined charges are just under one million dollars, nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand. But the capital plan is approximately four point one million dollars. So while the charges are increasing along that five-year phase-in timeframe, you can see that the capital demands are also continuing to increase, and we are not at the stage yet where we are, the amount of money that we're collecting is is at all balanced with the capital demands on the system.
Thank you, Mr. Givern. I think. Other questions? Of council? Well, I'm sure councillor Waxer.
Also on page twenty-eight, I was curious. I see that the revenue and expenses balance out to zero, but I wondered about the depreciation and funded line under.
Your worship, through to councillor Waxer, thank you for that question. Now, this is another area that completely, we're not there, we can't go there at this moment. But to make a a plan going forward, ideally, what I as finance and trying to recommend going forward is that we should be looking at also the depreciation values of the assets that we hold. Currently, we do not have to fund the depreciation. However, it would be a very good plan to do so because it would assist going forward. It wouldn't, it wouldn't fully recover because of the the inflation. However, it would assist if we do get to a place where we are also funding the depreciation through contributions to the reserves. And you can see under all of those areas, there's depreciation under all of the summary by objects on every department. So it could be buildings, machinery, equipment, whatnot, engineer structures and whatnot. So and some of that is fully depreciated already. So, yeah.
Thank you for that. I have one final question then. In event council was interested in tweaking the CCC model. And hypothetically, let's say, revenue will not alter, but the allocation within the various components might change a bit. When would you need to see amended bylaw? Would you need it in time for passing of the budget or could it come as it did last year's in January to affect the first billing of the new year? And again, on an assumption, which may not be true, that the net revenue generated would not change, but the allocation within the components might shift.
Your worship, maybe I'll I'll speak to that one. You're correct that the bylaw would not have to be before the budget. The budget can be approved. If the revenue is intended to stay the same, then changes to the bylaw on, you know, and how to collect that revenue. You should not hold up the passage of the budget. That said, last year, with the the discussion on the bylaw coming early in the new year, it it is a challenge for administration to be able to implement those changes and modify our billing system. And it did cause some delays and it did cause some concern with our customers in terms of late billings and billings that were not frankly not correct in the way that we would like to have them. So I think the caution would be that certainly council can do that. If council wished to change the model, that might be a discussion for midway through twenty twenty-three. So administration could build a revised model so that it would be ready to be implemented for the start of a year rather than at the start of the year deciding to change the model. It's it's a, if I can, it's a bit like trying to change the tires on the car while the car's rolling. There's not a lot of opportunity to sort of stop. So if you want to, if you want to change the tires or change the approach, we can certainly do that. And if council gave direction to administration to do so, we could set that for any particular billing period. But it is a significant piece of work to to change the model and the billing system. And I know that it caused our customers a lot of stress last year that I think administration wouldn't want to repeat.
Thank you, Mr. Givern. I appreciate that. There's still a degree of friction out there though. And I will say, only on my own data, I continue to be concerned about whether the current model achieves the equity value that we started with, particularly with respect to tiered rates. So if we, if we look at, and again, my perspective only, dropping the tiers, but leaving the the revenue the same, it would bring up the lower end and bring down the upper end. But it is, I find increasingly difficult to justify the tiered rate, particularly in the environment in which people live. And so a number of units in a, in an apartment, their usage, their volume gets aggregated, so they're paying at a higher rate for the same use that single-family residents. What, they're paying, in effect, more for the, for the water they use than their neighbor. And I find it challenging to justify that. Might simply be one of the limitations of the system that we have. But that's where I would like to to take some time to see whether we can build more equity into the system without losing recognition and respect for the fact that we want it to be cost recovery, but we want it to be fair. And it continues, for me at least, to be a bit of a challenge. I don't expect you to have to solve much else. But that's who I'm looking at. Councillor Hall and then councillor Demond.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. I wonder if, when we looked at the new billing model last year, there was a few different scenarios. Would moving to a different scenario be as much work as? Do you know what I mean? If there was a few different scenarios, we seemed to choose one that was kind of in the middle. Maybe we choose one that's not kind of in the middle. I'm just trying the least amount, easiest amount of work for administration, because I know it was, I know it's a lot of work.
So so just, and your worship for councillor Hall. So to be clear, this is not a concern about the amount of work that it is for administration. It's a concern about the impact on our customers and their billing, the dependability of their billing. You know, we want to ensure that people get their bills on time, that they know what they can expect to pay in advance. And that sort of, again, that analogy of changing the tires on the car while it's moving doesn't allow us to give them that predictability. So that's that's the concern that I'm relating. And again, council can choose to change that bylaw at any time. My suggestion would be if this is something you wish to review, either a different scenario or a tweaking within the the model or reallocation, any of those things are possible. My suggestion would be that it should be something that you start at the new year. Take some time to discuss what outcomes you're trying to achieve. Bring those proposed changes to a public meeting. See what those changes look like, you know, go through the whole process. And then change the bylaw when you're satisfied that the outcomes that you're trying to achieve will be achieved by whatever sort of rate structure you you choose to impose. I'm, and so that's completely possible, and administration is happy to support that. And that would, you know, a regularized process like that would allow us to give residents and businesses some advance notice about any changes in their rates. And that is somewhat independent of the overall municipal budget and the utility funded budget. If the assumption is that the amount collected through levies is going to stay the same. Right? So if if we decide that the amount for levies is going to be five point six eight four five eight five, which is what shows in on page twenty-eight, that's fine, and council could pass the budget. Now, the, and the how you collect that five point six eight four is the discussion that council could have in a way that would allow you to have enough space to be thoughtful about the approach that you'd want to take and to do the analysis that I'm sure you all would want to do.
Thank you, Mr. Givern. Councillor Demond.
Thank you, your worship. I do understand that there's still some friction in the community, and I think there there will always be friction when it comes to taxes and utility levies. And for me, it's just the ability to to be able to monitor that, you know. I I've spoken before about circles of influence and and then also fringe commentary or fringe thinking, like whenever we take an initiative on anything, you're going to get some debate on either side on for and against. And a lot of the times, the more vocal representatives in the community might not be representing a larger group than we think. So I'm not saying that it's a minority that's frustrated right now. But I think no matter what we do, it's going to be impossible to get it right for every single stakeholder in the community. So we're doing the best we can, and things are going to get tweaked, and I like the fact that we're discussing that. I like the the idea of changing the wheel on the fly. That's a, that's a pretty interesting analogy. Please forgive me, your worship, and I think it's, it may be because I missed the the utilities workshop. Just my understanding on equity, what, what you're making comments of right now with our existing model is that somebody in a two bedroom apartment unit is paying more for water and sewer than somebody, let's just say next door that has a two bedroom house. Is that kind of the reference you're making to and how is that information given?
My understanding is that in most cases for an apartment building, there would be one incoming line and that would be the measure of volume. And if you divided the volume by the number of units, it would probably be each one below the, I think it's thirty five cubic meters is the first tier. They will be below that, but they're way above it because it's thirty six times that. So they're paying, the apartment building is paying the rate that is at the top tier. Whereas each unit is actually consuming water at the low rate. So the rate that you would pay if you had your own line to your own house. And that is not what I had intended. I didn't intend that when we committed to the CCC model, which I continue to support, I was looking to bring equity, but not to have some people pay more for their cooking water and their bath water than others. That doesn't seem to be, to be fair. I'm not disputing that we need to collect the nitrogen on the system. But how do we afford it for everyone? All of the users is what continues to reflect to me.
Let's get in. Thank you very much. And, and I appreciate you clarifying that. And if I'm making you repeat it, I, I like that simplified answer, because that, that really made it understandable for me and maybe other people, because I wasn't sure if other people were understanding. So I completely get it now. And if that's the case, then, you know, we might have to, is there a way to, to change that? I mean, these are one offs, but we have to figure out, like, there's going to be anomalies in the community that, you know, we need to address. And of course that's going to offset things. And then the other users are going to have to pick that up. But it's going to be spread over a larger amount of units, right? So that's what we have to look at. That's what you're saying. Thank you.
Counselor Melnick.
Thank you, your worship, and following up on your comments and Counselor Demola's question. Pardon me for leaving the room for a moment. I kind of walked into the middle of the conversation. So the connection fee though, to an apartment, each resident in a thirty six unit apartment only pays one thirty six as opposed to their individual connection fee. So I'm wondering if the analysis in that scenario was done, that makes it more equitable and you can combine both of those measures. Because you know, if a residential household or is paying that one connection fee and yet the apartment resident is only paying the one thirty six, even though it's at a higher rate, I wonder if that helps balance that inequity.
Indeed it may. And that is part of the challenge. So if both parts are wrong, does that make it right? And that's, that's the challenge that I have. I think there is inequity both ways. Maybe in the end that balances off, but can we achieve something where each of the components has equity and it all adds up to an equitable system? Or do we say, well, we'll be inequitable here and inequitable there, and that will make it equitable overall. I struggle with that.
Counselor Demola. Thank you, worship. I guess the question is, do we have hard evidence? Do we have data collected from the individual? And that, and it's, it's completely showing that that's the inequity.
I don't know.
You're nodding your head. I was thinking that you were saying, yes, we have that. Okay.
Your, your worship, if I may, for Counselor Demola, yes, administration does have that information. And I think what we're really talking about is the total cost of water. But you know, is, is really where the, you know, your worship, you're kind of asking questions about, is somebody overpaying? And you, your comment there about an inequity here and an inequity there, I think is actually kind of getting to it because it may be that, and again, maybe we, and we have the data to Counselor Demola's question. We have the data to go through and can work through this with council. While an apartment building may be ending up in higher tiers for the cost of water, the fact that they are paying only one connection charge may offset that. And that's the type of thing that administration would be happy to analyze and present to council. Because the final outcome, you know, is really where council would probably want to have a look and see, you know, is the total cost of having water at an apartment building exceptionally different than the total cost of having water at a single family home? And that's a reasonable discussion. And I believe administration has the data to be able to go through that discussion with council. I think the thing that I would just remind council is that that is a complex discussion that will probably take a couple of working sessions at a committee meeting to go through for administration to present the data for council to decide what the data is telling you. And then for you to decide what you want to do about that. And those types of decisions can be independent from the overall budget discussion if council essentially agrees that the revenue needs are correct. You know, if you, if council disagrees with the revenue needs and says that there's, the, the system needs less revenue, this is your chance to do that discussion. The discussion about how you collect the revenue that you've decided that the system needs is a, is a somewhat separate discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Given. And that clarifies the question that I had to Mr. Greathead early on, that if we're not going to change the revenue pool, a decision on tweaking the model need not be made before we pass the budget. And that's fair. And it is a complex discussion. And if council is inclined to enter into that discussion, it can come probably in the new year. Are there further questions with respect to the utilities portion of the budget for Mr. Greathead at this time? Counselor Waxer.
I apologize if you did speak to, but I'm wondering if you did seek to be late request. The late, and I, I don't recall hearing about that. It's no wonder you could speak to that.
Your, your worship, I'm going to speak to that on Mr. Greathead's behalf, because I've been in touch with West Yellowhead. And so no, Counselor Waxer, we hadn't spoken to that. I will share my screen again. There is a need for West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management Authority to build a new cell at the landfill. Basically, these engineered structures fill up over time and as they fill up, you need to, I mean, at its most simplest form, you need to dig a new pit. These are much more complex than, than new pits. They meet Alberta environment regulation standards and everything else. So they are engineered structures. But I mean, at its most simple level, you have a pit, it fills up, you need to dig a new pit. The West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management Authority is at that point where they need to dig a new pit, the new cell they're called. And the authority has been saving up money that it's been collecting in rates over the years in order to meet this foreseeable expense. The authority administration estimates that constructing a new cell with a lifespan of about seven and a half years will cost about four million dollars. And the authority itself has about four million dollars in reserves that has been building up over time for this purpose. West Yellowhead Administration undertook a bit more analysis and identified that they could construct a, a a new cell that essentially has three trenches rather than two. And the three trench design would nearly double the lifespan of the, of that, of that pit. But would not double the cost. It would be just approximately just about two million dollars additional. So the request from West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management Authority is for the partners to support the construction of a new three trench cell at the landfill that would give the landfill approximately thirteen and a half years of lifespan before the need to dig a new cell. Jasper's share of that additional cost, sorry, I should back up. The authority itself does not have any borrowing power or authority, so it can't go and seek its own debt to fund this. And so the, if the partners see the advantage of going with a longer lived cell at a lower cost, then the partners need to contribute to that construction. Jasper's share of that cost would be approximately two hundred and seventy thousand dollars and would require approximately a thirteen percent increase in solid waste revenue in 2023. And that increase would continue, would not increase again, but that thirteen percent would also be in 2024 and then would decline in 2025. So the request from West Yellowhead, and this really did come through just in the last week and a bit, as they're going through their, their process, is for the partners to consider in the 2023 budget, supporting the additional cost to construct this longer lived cell. Because ultimately it will save all users money over time when compared to building the cell with a shorter lifespan. I'm happy to take any questions on that.
Can you tell us, Mr. Given, what impact that would have on, on our current budget? Would it just see a thirteen percent increase in that one revenue stream from garbage collection and disposal?
Your worship, that's correct. It would have a thirteen percent increase in that revenue stream and that impact on levies or the rates for garbage collection and disposal charged to all users. And it would be offset on our expense side by the contribution to increased contribution to West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management Authority.
Questions? Counselor Melnick.
Thank you, your worship. To Mr. Given, is it possible that that could be spread out over two years, twenty three and twenty four?
That is the proposal, Counselor Melnick, to the total cost, Jasper's total cost is approximately two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Administration is proposing to, to put that with, with half of that being collected in 2023 and half of it being collected in 2024.
Counselor Demola, just while we're, now we're crunching and doing stuff here, I'm just, I would like some of this information, if not already, we put aside and used for information when we go to the province with our requests for alternate sources of revenue or different tools. Cause these types of things that keep increasing the burden, we wouldn't have so much stuff to deal with if we weren't a resort area. So because of that increased burden, like these little things that we don't think about on a daily basis add up. And, you know, give us unique challenges. And even though this is part of a regional thing, probably some of that oversizing would be needed if we didn't have that much travel through, you know, this corridor. And it's not just Jasper that faces that. It's also the incidents and everybody else that's surrounding, because they're dealing with the tourism increase in the summertime, the level of activity of regional tourism and international tourism has a huge impact. We can't keep going to the taxpayers or, and, you know, to, to fund these things. So it's becoming a bigger challenge. And we need to have these little pieces. And I'm sorry I'm taking up time here, but hopefully it could be used as a piece down the road. Thank you.
Counselor Melnick.
Thank you again, your worship, and to Mr. Given, just to understand, thank you for the clarity on the two years. Is our portion based in our percentage of call it contribution to the landfill? Or is it based on a straight division by the number of partners?
Thanks for the question, Counselor Melnick. It is based on our sort of usage of the landfill. And, and so the percentages are split by how much each partner consumes in the landfill. It is on utilization, not, not just on a straight division by the total number of partners.
So, you know, basically we're paying our fair share and there are five other, four other partners, five other partners that are paying potentially a higher contribution to make this third cell option, which should save money over the long term.
That's correct, Counselor Melnick.
Mr. Given, I believe that you can correct me if, if I am wrong, but I, I believe that the share of each member of the West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management Authority pays based on weight transferred to the facility. Is that your understanding? And Counselor Wilson also sits on that, that board. I think it's weight based. Does that sound right?
Yes, I believe so, your worship. It's on tonnage. And I can speak briefly to the amounts. And again, these may, these are indicative amounts, but in a discussion with the other C A Os in the region, this additional cost of approximately two million dollars. Jasper would be responsible for two hundred and seventy thousand. The M D of Greenview, which is a new partner coming on to support the former town of Grand Cash, would be two hundred and forty six thousand. Yellowhead County would be three hundred and sixteen thousand. Edson would be four hundred and seventy one thousand and Hinton would be six hundred and ninety five thousand. So you can see there that these are not just proportion, these are proportionally split based on, you know, on, I believe our tonnage. They're not just split equally amongst the, amongst the five partners.
Interesting, though, if I may, can I round out the discussion? We pay on weight, not on volume. And yet we are singled out as providing incredible volume by the number of mattresses that are sent to the landfill. And cells fill up quickly because of mattresses. And so we have looked at a very expensive machine that could conceivably tear up those mattresses and take up less space in, in cell. But it is, it is an issue and it works. Yes, you're, you're right, Counselor Demola, that there is an impact from visitation that affects our contribution, but it's also the type of industry that, that this town relies upon. And to keep sanders up, mattresses are often replaced. And it makes a big difference in the landfill. Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Just to speak a little bit further, another question, but just a comment. What Counselor Demola was talking about, with how it's so difficult to keep passing this onto our taxpayer in our little tiny town. With Alberta, I'm looking at their ten year tourism strategy, it drove revenue to twenty billion dollars by 2030. So it's you know, just, just something to think about.
In any event, on this topic then, thank you for raising it, Counselor Waxer and Mr. Given. Is there In any event, on this topic, then, thank you for raising it, Counselor Waxer and Mr. Given, um, is there a recommendation from administration to amend the budget in some fashion?
Your worship, if, uh, council is ready to move there, we, uh, do have some motions for council's consideration, uh, with respect to the utilities budget. Uh, I can put those on screen now. Uh, and it does include on this item specifically. So you can see there, uh, and we tried to give council the range of options, uh, and, um, show you some formats of how you can make the motion. So on this one, um, administration is recommending that committee amend the utilities operational budget to include $270,000 over two years to fund Jasper's portion of the construction of a new landfill cell. Um, or if council didn't wish to do that, um, at all, the committee could approve the utilities operational budget as presented. Um, or of course you could also vary the length of term, uh, if you wanted to do it over three years or, or longer. Um, there's also motions related to the capital budget, uh, committee approve the utilities capital budget as presented. Or that the committee amend the utilities capital budget by changing the status of uh, project name to funded. Uh, so if there's an unfunded project that you wish to fund, you could, uh, do that using that form of motion. Or if there's a project in, that is already funded in the budget that you wish to, uh, not proceed with in 2023, uh, you can use that final form of motion, that committee amend the utilities capital budget by changing the status of project name to unfunded in 2023. Um, so those are the types of motions that administration, uh, is requesting from council, um, uh, to conclude the discussion on the utilities based budget.
Thank you, Mr. Given, and for clarity for counselors and of course for the public. We are sitting in committee, if we make these motions, that will amend the budget which ultimately comes forward to council for approval. So it's not still a final approval of the budget, it is just amending the form of budget which comes forward later for approval. Are there any counselors prepared to make motions? Counselor Wilson?
Uh, not prepared to make a motion just yet. Uh, it was just clarification, um, for really all the counselors, uh, um. So I heard Mr. Given suggested, uh, any, any unfunded items, like say, for example, the retrofit old garbage cans in permanent locations, um, for 300,000, because it, the line item, uh, suggests that it's unfunded. That's not included in, in this, um, would not be included in this bu- budget. You know, same as, as would go the, uh, the, the tool trailer, um, that, uh, that Mr. Grayhead had spoke about.
That's correct, uh, your worship for Counselor Wilson, that's correct. So the items that are listed as unfunded in 2023, um, are, are listed in your budget document, um. And if council wished to fund them, then you could make that motion, um, to amend the budget by, uh, changing the status of, again, whatever that project is to fund it. Uh, and as I said, conversely, if there is a project that was funded that you didn't wish to proceed with, uh, you could do the same sort of inverse version of that motion.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Melnick?
Thank you, worship. Um, Counselor Wilson referred to a trailer that was unfunded. I think when the trailer was being discussed, it, um, is actually funded and it's up in the, um, utility section. I think this is a different trailer that we didn't have any description about, if I'm correct. This is a second trailer for another purpose and perhaps Counselor, uh, sorry, Director Greathead could clarify for us what that second trailer is.
Your worship, uh, to speak to Counselor Melnick's question, um, we do have a, uh, a proposal in there that's unfunded for $40,000 for 53 foot trailer, um, and that would be a highway trailer that we could load our cardboard in. Um, a problem with, uh, our cardboard, right now, uh, we're paying for both the trucking and the storage fees, uh, for the cardboard. And if it stays inside, um, there's zero value, uh, it will become just a waste product. So we need somewhere to store it, um, sometimes arranging trucks, we may have 110 bales, um, or 110 tons of processed cardboard, uh, that we're looking at to get rid of. So this would be a, this, our, our plan is this would give us the capacity to reduce our contracted services. Um, and, uh, we would be able to store the cardboard bales and, but in that stop time to making those deliveries to Edmonton. So that would just be kind of a change where work, uh, focus, but the, of the last is for that trailer and that's what that purpose would be.
Thank you for that. And, um, I hope Counselor Wilson had also clarified for you the two different trailers. I didn't realize the second trailer and the purpose of it.
Counselor Keller, happy?
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. To you too, uh, Mr. Greathead. So I understand you correctly, Mr. Greathead, that if you were to fund that 40,000, that would be due for contract uh, services by 40,000?
I think it would take a while for, um, that to be realized and we could speculate on what, uh, the rate paid, what the response, kind of why we didn't show it as a, a direct production. And, uh, services that we're able to show other departments.
I'm curious on contract services. Um, in 2022, it was $2 million, 28, but in 2023, it's a 2.3 million, and we go back to 1.0 now. Following to yours, can you explain what contract services increased over the 2023?
Your worship, your worship, through to Counselor Keller, happy? Um, I can explain that. I would just need a bit more time to dive into the numbers to figure out exactly how it worked out. I'm just curious, thank you.
Counselor Demora?
Thank you, worship. Well, I had several segments going into the cardboard discussion, but I think once we open, unpack that one, it'll, it'll be quite a bit. So I don't want to do that right now. Because we're on, on this discussion and potential motions coming forward, um, there's a few other unfunded things, um, on here that don't have any numbers in the future, and that's the coronation system, uh, replacement and, uh, room safety upgrades. And then the, the deep infrastructure, uh, renewal, uh, program. So if we don't go ahead with, you know, helping fund those, what are the consequences? And, you know, we talked about maybe not taking money away from this year's budget to, to unfund some other things to, to make other things possible. What are the consequences? We have to think about those immediate ones and, and what happens when we have to go replace in the future? So how, the questions are, I guess, how immediate are these?
Your worship, through to Counselor Demora. Um, the ones that you referenced, uh, that don't have values attached, just because they are further down the line. Um, 20, could be 28, 30, 2030, something like that. It's, uh, I should have bumped up the infrastructure, um, replacement tooling. So that it would show that it's just coming down, it's, it, it's in the forecast. Um, so it's probably anywhere in the next 10, 10, or five years after the 2027. Um, the impact of unfunded under 2023 is the only ones really that I would suggest might be, um, important to consider at this moment. Unfunded in 2024 does not mean that we won't be able to go ahead with those. It's just that, um, a bigger plan has to be made and, and closer to that timeframe. Um, there are a few, not many, that are unfunded in 2023. Those are the ones that, um, if you wanted to fund those, this upcoming year would be, um, it was recommended by administration that, that those projects would be ideal to go through. Now, the, the reason that I put unfunded beside it is because it was getting to a point of being very close to, um, spending exactly the amount that we're putting away. So I'm trying to also get us to a point where we're not spending everything that we put away for the future. Um, so it was, um, it's not even close to where I'd want it to be, but it, it's still possible. It's just in, in light of looking into the future.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And, and I understand that the, the concept behind the, the future funding and the 24s and so on. So thank you for clarifying those blank ones. Um, the other thing is, you know, we're here and it's some of these things that can's been kicked and down the road and we're having to face it. So how further down the road do we kick them? We've got $540,000 on the table right now, plus another 270 to, to contemplate. So, um, you know, we're getting close to another million dollars here. So, um, you know, and how much is a percentage? It's just over 100,000, right? Like 105 every?
Um, per, percentage in the operating budget increase from the, um, 2022 is 91,000. Yeah, 227, I think it is.
I know it's separate. I'm just using that as, you know, a rationale behind the thinking is the taxpayer is going to have to pay regardless, right? Or sorry, the stakeholder is going to have to pay. Thank you.
Counselor Waxer?
Through you, Mayor Ireland, to C A O Given. I was, um, with the recommended motions, it, um, it's looks like it's, it sounds like it's, um, optional whether to, uh, contribute to the, uh, new cell. Um, but, uh, I'm assuming that it actually isn't optional and that, um, all other, all, all the other communities are in fact, uh, contributing their, their fees.
Uh, your worship for Counselor, uh, Waxer, uh, no, it's not known at this time whether other councils will support this, uh, request. Uh, it is optional. Uh, if council declines to provide the money this way, then, uh, West Yellowhead uh, could s- um, simply build the cell, uh, with a more limited lifespan. And then come back around in another six and a half years to build another cell. Um, of course, with inflation, everything, um, that's where the administration was seeing the opportunity for savings. Um, so it is actually optional, um, and we don't have information yet about how the other communities, uh, have faced, faced this issue, um, because they're at various stages in their budget discussions. Um, so I unfortunately can't tell you whether the other communities have supported this or not. Um, and of course we wouldn't, um, forward any money until we knew that, uh, you know, the approach that West Yellowhead was gonna, the, the authority was gonna take. Um, but it is, council does have an option here. Um, and, uh, so that, that's why the motion is, uh, written the way that it is.
Counselor Hall and then Counselor Demora?
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. I have a question about, so, so the utility, the utility budget is separate from taxes. We talk about roughly $100,000 is equivalent to a percent increase in taxes. Is it the same with utilities? Is it gonna, would it kind of relate to a percent increase in, because they're two separate things? So I'm just curious how I wouldn't confuse your question.
Your worship, through to Counselor Hall. Um, yes, you're correct. It would be a different, um, percentage. I didn't look at that, um, I can calculate it out, uh. It is completely a different number. And it's also how you want to look at it. I find you can look at the whole revenue that you have to, um, bring in, or you can just look at it on the levy sense as well. Cause that's the largest amount and that's where a lot of the, um, um, change occurs. Um, so I often look at both respects, um, but yes, I can easily calculate, calculate that out as well.
You only have four questions.
Counselor Demora? That was good. Um, I guess where I, I want to go here is, um, just a comment because, uh, Mr. Given had made the, Mr. Given had made the, uh, comment that, you know, it's not about the work, uh, put on the administration, but, uh, you know, we're servicing our, our rate payers here, I guess. I wanted to say taxpayers, good. Um, I think one thing that was really helpful, I was really appreciative to, to get a definition on the C P I and the municipal price index and how that's different. But we used to have, um, uh, in our intros, what $100,000 increase would be to taxpayers and rate payers. So, and even though we're doing priority based, that type of information might help our decision making. When it comes down to, you know, analyzing our priorities, like right now, we're, we're talking about all these increases and that has affected on the utility rates. But what does that mean to a household? So if, if we're going to add another 500, 700,000 dollars somewhere, what is that going to mean? Cause if it's only like four dollars a year, then it's really easy to make that decision. But if it's going to be another $200 for average household, then that's a harder pill to swallow. So that's where I'm kind of stuck. I, we have some motions in front of us today and I'm like, yeah, what does it mean? In the grand scheme of things? And should it mean something?
Your worship, if I can, for Counselor Demora, um, and again, uh, we have to keep it in mind, the utility funded budget and the, and the regular tax funded budget. Um, and so I'll, I'll tackle your question on the utility funded budget first. Um, the, the what does it mean, uh, is something that administration can show you, uh, following, you know, the direction of whether or not you want to include some of these things or if you want to do any changes, um, so we can demonstrate that to you. Um, the, uh, challenge is that you could choose to amend, uh, you know, the, the C C C rate model, the way it's applied. And it may change the amount of revenue that comes in from different streams. And so that could affect a different rate payers differently. So we could probably only give you a generalized sense of how much an increase there would be uh, on any sort of utility rate category. And I think Ms. Melmanchuck probably has that at hand. Um, and an example is that in the, uh, solid waste and the garbage collection rates, uh, the base budget proposal is approximately a 2% increase. Um, the addition of the, uh, $270,000 over two years would be an additional 13%. So that would be a 15% increase in solid waste rates, uh, in 2023. Um, Natasha, I don't know, uh, if you have at hand, um, the percent increase that you're forecasting in each of the utility levy categories. Do you have that information?
I can in two seconds, but not quite. It's not, um, or wait just one second. I might have done it and I don't. Oh, I do. I do, uh, so actually, um, so this is considering the, um, changes after, um, some of the discussions as well as, uh, the change in garbage. So the water actually went down, um, by 0.77%. Um, sanitation sewer went up by 6.09%. That is a combined rate of 5.32%. Garbage, as, um, alluded to by Mr. Given, is 15.07%. And, um, so before the conversations around the, um, Waste Yellowhead, um, addition to their capital, um, needs, uh, it was 2%, 2.42, and then it went up to
Four two, and then it went up to the fifteen point zero seven. And recycling is thirty eight point eight seven percent. So now with the changes also um. To the the garbage levy. Overall, we'd be looking at. Over the prior year is. Eight point one percent. Thank you.
Mister Given, if I may be. The funding for. West Shellhead Regional Waste Management. From our perspective rather than. The authorities' perspective. Is there any funding available for us from other sources? Um, it appears that this could be regarded as a capital expense. And I just wonder whether there are. Opportunities open world at large for. Submitting for a capital expenditure for. Waste. Treatment or. Disposal.
Your worship, there may be, uh, and that's something administration could explore. Uh, I would say that we don't have any significant amounts of unallocated. Uh, current capital funds uh or capital grants, so, you know, this could be something that M S I dollars could be used to fund. But I believe that we and Ms. Melon Chuck, uh, and I can have a look at this uh if council approves the the amount. We can seek uh other grants or perhaps decide if uh it may might make more sense to do this as debt. Um, but really. And we would do that prior to coming to you with proposed amendments to the. Uh, utility rate bylaw, because whatever council does with the municipal budget. Uh, we will still have to come to you for changes to the utility rate bylaw to enact the rates that would be required to collect the amounts. Uh, in the budget that you approved. So um, there's a couple of steps here, and during those steps, we would have some opportunity to. Assess whether there might be other revenue sources that could help offset some of this expense. Um, we're not immediately aware of any, um, but that doesn't mean that there aren't any.
Thank you for that, um. Potentially related, um. Depending whether we wanted to treat the the request for the new cells and capital expenses, Counselor Demora alluded. If council. Were to. Uh, change the allocation of any of the twenty twenty three capital. Uh, projects from unfunded. To something else. Is that something else restricted to reserves? Is there any other funding source that is available to replace unfunded?
I think that that's likely a question from Ms. Melman Chuck. Uh, I think the answer is is probably no. Um, Natasha, are there any other sort of? Un- uh, unallocated sort of sources of funding uh that you would recommend for these items?
Um, some of them might be able to um follow follow under the um M S I. Um. But it I have to reread the guidelines every time that I. Um, actually go in and look at these, um. And then if anything else comes up during the year, then that's something that can be considered. But at the moment, uh, we would probably be looking at um the reserves themselves to to um. Fund it, and then if we're able to offset down um in the year, then we would obviously look to do so. Um, we do have a plan for the M S I funds that we have. As well as the federal gas tax that we have. And it also encompasses future years, so it's not um. All done in one year, um, so it's something that can. Um, I often look at this the future rather than just spending it all in one year is also planning for the future years to come, so.
Thank you for that. I I'm just concerned that if council. Is inclined. Toward passing the motion. That committee amend the utilities capital budget by changing the status of project name X. To funded. In fact. Nothing ever appears as funded. If it is funded. The funding source is shown, so. I'm just trying to confirm that if we if we change it from unfunded. It would be funded but from a source and that source for the time being at least will be reserves.
Your worship, uh, I I believe that's correct and um. You you are working in committee right now. If you gave administration direction to recognize something as a funded project, essentially saying, we want this project to go ahead in twenty twenty three. We would come back to you uh at the council meeting uh with the fully, you know. Um, with the funding sources identified. Um, and so whether it was reserves, debenture, uh, M S I or other. Uh, we would take the intervening time between when council concludes its work today. And the next regular council meeting where the sort of finalized budget is presented to identify an appropriate funding source. Um, so council doesn't need to identify the funding source, uh, you know, other than. I suppose if you thought that something should be funded by debt, that would be, you know, maybe that would be something you could do, but again. Uh, a word of caution that, uh, you know, in terms of our debt picture, uh, Ms. Melon Chuck does a significant amount of work. To see, uh, you know, what we've got going, what we've got coming off. Um, and so my best advice would be that if there's a project that you think is very important to go ahead this year, tell us so. Tell us to fund it and we will identify the uh most appropriate funding source and and bring that to you. Uh, in the final budget before council considers it for for approval.
Thank you for that, Counselor Demora.
You know, made reference to revenue tools. And I know it's late for twenty twenty three to develop a new system, but. We continue to get a case of this. Is there an opportunity? Well, there is an opportunity for discussion on using business licenses to. Try to find some environmental levies. To offset some of this stuff, so that we don't have to keep going from reserves and. Some and then encourage. Maybe the commercial side of that to. Um, well, I guess most of it would be commercial, but to pass that along to their. Visitors or users. And. And we we have to start thinking outside the box if we're not going to get external help. Or until we get some, we have to, you know, maximize what we can do within our own community, so. Again, this is a way to to try to get some relief from visitation. Um, through a tool that we have access to. Just an idea. Um. Then these decisions aren't as painful. Or as hard to stick out. And then we can put money towards reserve.
Counselor Wilson, was your hand up?
Yeah, it was, um. It, I guess it it's a. My question or my comment kind of encapsulates both the way uh the the additional money uh for the um waste authority. Um, I'm I'm challenged to, although I do support the um. The additional uh uh expenditure to, you know, in reality, save money for the taxpayer in the future. Uh, it's kind of coming at us at a very um challenging point in in our budget, because we've we've went and uh. Um, you know, moved many, many positions forward here and and, you know. Two hundred and seventy thousand dollars really represents two employees. I know it's, you you know, it's paid for differently, but it's still paid for by the same people. Um, I I can't put forward uh the motion to approve uh the two hundred and seventy thousand until we have further conversations on. Uh, the employee, the additional employees that we've uh. We've tentatively suggested we're we're gonna move forward and. Uh, I was just, I guess, feeling out the conversation, um. Are we going to have further conversation on um? If everybody still supports a full-time uh development. To officer, manager position, or can we amalgamate that into a development officer? Development manager position and a housing coordinator? Could that be one position for this year? Um, are are we go, are we thinking we're gonna have those conversations or or does everybody feel like? You know, last uh two weeks ago, we decided that, yeah, we're. We're we'd like to move all these uh positions forward uh uh in this year's budget.
My understanding, Counselor Wilson, is that we agreed to move matters forward for. Further debate and deliberation, so. Your your first question from my perspective um is answered in the affirmative. Yes, these are still all the matters that are. Subject to debates and. My personal approach was sure, put things forward, put them in the plot. Because that's what priority-based budgeting is about. At the end of the day. Um, we line up all the requests and decide what are really the priorities and how we deal with them. So I think that discussion is yet to come, but first we have to figure out um what in fact is in the proposed budget. And then we debate that.
Counselor Demora.
Uh, thank you. And to add that for Counselor, um. Wilson, I'm not sure uh if you had already been. Um, if you've already left at the point where we got our our packages, but. Some of our homework was to uh look at. The additional position asked and compare that to uh the the colorful chart. That priorities list, so uh when we come to our meeting, hopefully. Not decided today, but for absolute decision on the sixth. Um, we would weigh those new positions against what our actual strategic priorities are. That for clarification, did I get that right? Okay.
We have now been at this for two hours and five minutes. Um. I had thought that we might um. Get some motions to move utilities matters forward, then take a break and get into the balance of. The agenda. But in the absence of a train of motions. Do people need a break? All right, um, I will I will call a recess. I will give us, I think it's eight minutes, we will reconvene at, above and plenty. Right, we are. Back in session, I had anticipated that we might get to. Motions uh with respect to the utilities budget, but I understand that there might be some. Further questions for. Mister Greathead, if that is the case, I would welcome those now, otherwise I would look to council to. Move matters along in one fashion or another, so we can get to the balance of the agenda for today.
Counselor Demora.
Thank you, worship through you, Mr. Greathead. Um. My intention is not to catch you off guard, I'm just doing these uh. Be quarters that came out of conversations. Now, as far as cardboard and solid waste goes. Um, it's it's difficult to come up with a C C C type model. Um, as we did for for water on these things, but, you know, um, you spoke of um. Getting information from recycling service study. And. You know, and and from past experience, if we're not asking the questions we want outcomes for, sometimes we're just relying on the study to get done and then. It just ends up sitting on the shelf because we have no use for the information that it's given, so I'm wondering. If there's an opportunity to um look at a component in what in what we're asking the study to do to see if. Where we could find some equity in balancing out residential and and. Commercial. Revenue. For the services that we provide and um so that. You know, we don't have to put the burden in in certain areas and and if it's residential that uses more or. You know, commercial cardboard, for example. Is heavily um produced by. The commercial sector, i.e. restaurants and hotels predominantly, so, you know, are the residents getting. You know, is is their contribution fair compared to to that and are they getting the right balance, so? I think one of the things that, you know, a question that I do have. Is uh. Through you, your worship to Mister Greathead. We looked at um what the. Recycling Council of Alberta is doing. And. I didn't even know about it till today, just because I was looking at it and somebody had explained to me that B A F seems to be getting revenues. Uh, they make money off of their cardboard and I don't know how, and so I was just looking into to some stuff that they're involved in and. They're part of this circular economy in Alberta and and I'm not sure if that has anything to do with their revenues or even if that's a true statement. But if uh, you know, looking for those opportunities and if we're we're doing this study. Could those things be included in that, so? We, again, I'm just looking at trying to find revenue to offset the burden on our stakeholders' rate payers. Thank you, worship, um. Uh, this is definitely a hot button or hot topic for sure. Um, commercial cardboard does take up the bulk of our activities. Um, I know that there are some inequities kind of in the system. Um, that have been pointed out to me, uh, and so when we do, uh, when council looks at. Um, adjusting the rates or or. Wants to delve into the utilities. Um, I think I'd be happy to speak to that in some of our observances. Um, I know that uh there's some some issues where. Uh, the business licensing is pretty much the same across the board, but when we pick up. Uh, cardboard at, say, a restaurant and we're doing daily runs uh to pick up cardboard there. Um, but we're not providing that same service for somebody that runs a bed breakfast. Um, but their business licensing is the same in the cardboard, um, recycled piece is the same. So there are some inequities in there, um, I would like to address, uh. I believe that our cardboard, uh, commercial cardboard costs the municipality, uh, probably a quarter million dollars a year. Um, roughly just on commercial cardboard, so. So, um, you know, were we to revisit our utility rate models? Um, I would, I think that would be something beneficial for for the community to really take a hard look at.
Go ahead, Counselor.
So could conceptually, um. Consumption. Connection. Costs be. Run through a business license?
Your worship.
Technically, sorry.
Your worship, if I may, uh, to to uh respond to Counselor Demora's question, I think, um, you know, the. Consumption capital connection, the C C C model that we use on the water side. Uh, might not be the appropriate model to apply to things like solid waste recycling, but certainly there are other ways to build in additional uh measures of equity. Um, if you look at our utility bylaw right now, um, we have a recycling fee. Uh, of thirty one eighty three uh per billing. Um, and then we have a recycling fee for a duplex of sixty three sixty seven per billing. Um, we do not have a commercial recycling fee. Um, so that's an example of where uh anybody that's paying for recycling is paying essentially the same.
Um, so that's an example of where uh anybody that's paying for recycling is paying essentially the same rate other than duplexes. Um, and it might be a worthwhile consideration of should there be a residential recycling fee at a certain rate? And a commercial recycling fee at a, at a different rate, uh, because certainly um. When you look at the amount of plastics that are in our plastic trailer, a lot of that plastic really does appear to come from large commercial plastics. Um, and same sort of thing as uh in the cardboard side, obviously, the um commercial operations um are likely generating more cardboard. Um, as Mr. Greathead said, there are some studies uh that we're undertaking, and I think he even has some data that, that might help us. Uh, give some information to council that you could make some decisions on. If council wanted to explore um additional changes to the recycling and garbage rates to uh improve equity. That's the kind of direction that you could give us today uh to bring forward at a future committee, the whole meeting. Uh, without necessarily impacting the budget. Again, we're talking about how you would collect the money that you need to collect uh to run the operation. And uh we can collect it in any different sort of portions from different rate payers. Um, without necessarily impacting the overall amount of money that we're collecting. Um, so if council wanted us to explore um ways to increase equity in recycling and uh garbage fees. Uh, you could simply make a motion to ask us to bring something back at a future committee, the whole meeting to explore that issue.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Counselor DeMoto.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And, and I, I think I was looking for some alternate uh semantics when I was referring to connection. And uh conception to that, well, conception is there. Um, the reason I was going in the direction of the, the business license. Is because I, I want businesses to have the ability to pass on that to the users or the bigger users or. The larger consumers, because it, to me, it's to burden, to put more burden on businesses after going through. Uh, the pandemic and then the power outage uh this year, it's just, it, it's really hard. For some to recoup their costs. And this would give them a direct line to the person that's paying the bill and have that charge on the bill as opposed to hiding it in. Some other costs somewhere to make up for it, because there's, there's only so much that you can charge consumers. Um, or charge the, the commercial sector on what they're paying already. Some residential use on, on things are higher than commercial, but. Were, their taxes are higher, five to one ratio. And then, you know, when we're talking about having a recycling, a different recycling fee for commercial, I'm all for it. Is, that's where it's coming from, but how do we pass that on to our visitors? So that the burden isn't hit on the individuals there.
Thank you for that. I would welcome a motion to direct administration to go back to committee of the whole to try and rationalize. Both garbage and recycling fees. It seems to me the challenge is that unlike water and sewer. Where the outage, what gets measured gets managed. We have an opportunity to measure water and through that sewer. In this environment, we don't have a, a direct way to measure um. Cardboard or other garbage, uh, because of the nature of the system that's in place in the National Park community. Other communities would curbside pickup, measure and manage. And it's, it's a different system, but can we achieve something similar here? I, I would welcome that discussion. We need a motion to encourage administration to come back to committee of the whole. Um, to discuss those possible candidates. I would certainly welcome them. And here I await both motions. Counselor Waxer.
Uh, I'm, forgive me as I stumble through it, but uh, that, that committee direct administration to. Bring back a, is going to help. A study on.
Your worship, um, if I may, maybe it's not a study. Uh, it might be council directing administration to bring back a report reviewing alternatives. Uh, to increase equity in solid waste and recycling charges.
I like the sound of that. Thank you.
And that has been recorded. As the motion. All right. Thank you. Is there any debate on that motion? I think that is to bring back to a future committee of the whole without being precise of other date. Counselor DeMoto.
I like that. And I was, I was contemplating it going in a direction like that. However, it's just, I'm kind of lost at how that affects us. In the next couple of weeks, because it doesn't really help us come to a conclusion on what we can do and bring on these. It'll give us an opportunity to, to iron out, um, you know, how we retrieve the, the revenue for that. But we still have some technical issues. So I've been supportive of this motion to, it's gonna get information back to this. I think that's all I have to say.
Again, it, I think in many ways does not necessarily impact the decision that's before us today. The, the budget for utilities is still the budget. That's what it takes to operate it. If we can apportion those costs ultimately in a more equitable fashion throughout the community, um, that would be, that would be fair. Uh, but in the meantime, passing the budget is independent of, of that in many ways. Counselor Melnick, was that an offer to make motion?
I think we have a motion.
Oh, I'm sure you, I thought we had passed it. My fault. I'm looking around. I did not call a question. All those in favor? There are none opposed. That is carried. Counselor Melnick.
I do have a quick question for um Mr. Given, if I may. Would you, Mr. Given, have an idea when we might hear if the other communities are going to fund? The construction of a new landfill cell with the three. Option with, for the three um areas instead of the two? Will that happen by sometime next week?
Uh, your worship for Counselor Melnick, no, I, I don't think that that's likely. Um, I know that the authority is working a schedule of meeting. Um, and as I said before, some councils had already been through their budget process, others uh had yet to start, and so there's a bit of a mix. Um, I think we would need to get additional information from the management authority on what their fallback position would be. If, if the council had, didn't all have an opportunity to get it into their budget discussions. Um, but uh, we did have a meeting as CAOs last week. Uh, the indication was that, that most uh were able to take this to councils uh for their budget discussion. There was one municipality that had already concluded their budget discussions. Uh, and, and so we may have, the, the collective might have to figure out how we manage that uh one municipality that wasn't able to get it to their budget process.
So that might continue, your worship, since there is, you know, possibility that this might not occur. If we did make a motion to include it and the project isn't going to happen, it would automatically just come out um. Out of the budget that we have or would be unspent funds, I would believe, right? So based on that, to move things along. I would make the motion that committee amend the utilities operational budget to include the two hundred and seventy dollars. Over two years to fund Jasper's portion of the construction of a new landfill cell. So that's a motion. And again, a contingent on what our, our partners are going to be doing. Um, it may end up uh um being a midpoint at the end of it.
Thank you, Counselor Melnick. If I can put words in your mouth, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars?
Two hundred and seventy thousand, I say two hundred and seventy? Relax, you would please. So we'll make that two hundred and seventy thousand.
Thank you. Any debate on that motion? Counselor Waxer?
None. Not so much debate, but again, uh, just a quick clarification. If, if we end up passing that, would it change the rate, the utility rates? For twenty twenty-three and in the event it didn't happen?
Your worship, through to Counselor Waxer, yes, um, for the full plan to occur, then yes, it would occur. It would have to change the rates that were applied in the, in the bylaw going forward. Um, there are, there are other options that we could look at with that, those funds. If, if, um, they wouldn't be used by the authority um in the coming year. But um, just a thought, um, but really it, and also it can be looked at as, um. If it was uh collected and not used, then it also could be considered in the next year coming up as um. Um, stabilization for the next year as well. So some other thoughts behind, you know, collecting the money and, and if it isn't used, we. There's definitely some areas that could be, um, they could be moved to. Thank you so much.
Any criticism, Counselor Melnick?
Just to be clear, that, that since it's over two years, it's really a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars that would go into twenty twenty-three. And then a hundred and thirty-five which would go into twenty twenty-four if this in fact goes through.
Your worship, yes, that is correct, to Counselor Melnick.
All right. And again, this impacts the form and content of the utilities budget. Which will be before council for approval um on December sixth. So by that time, that we might have further information about what other communities are doing. So, um, this is not a final determination, it's just to amend the budget um for presentation. Is there any other debates on the motion? I will call a question. All those in favor? There are none opposed. That is carried. Unless there are. Other motions to amend, I would think we still need a motion to approve the utilities. Operating budget as amended. Counselor Waxer?
I will make that motion uh that uh, that committee approve the utilities budget as amended.
Is there any debate on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor? There are none opposed. That is carried, which takes us to the capital budget. If I might, I will relinquish the chair and to Deputy Mayor Hall. And I will make a motion that committee amend the utilities capital budget by changing the status. Of the fifty-foot, fifty-three-foot trailer which appears under the garbage and recycling subsection. From unfunded to funded in the amount of forty thousand dollars. And just speaking to that motion, um, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Greathead. You cannot yet say what the savings would be in terms of contracted services. But it covers two important components. It gives a dry place to store the cardboard while we collect it and then our own means to transport it. Elsewhere, saving costs in the long run. It, it's not worth not doing. Um, it's, it's a relatively small sum, but it's, it's a step forward in the right direction. So I really appreciated those comments. So I'm supportive of that small change in the capital budget.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Any uh debate or questions to motion? I see no hands. I will call the question. All in favor? And that motion is carried. I'll pass the chair back to you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. Are there any other motions to amend? The capital budget for utilities? And if not, then we could conclude this discussion by motion to approve the utilities capital budget as amended. Counselor Melnick, make that.
I'll make the motion that committee approve the utilities capital budget as amended.
Thank you, Counselor Melnick. Are there, is there any debate on that motion? I will then call the question. All those in favor? There are none opposed. That is carried. That gets us, I think. To agenda item three point two. Requested information. Um, I will turn to you, Mr. Given, with respect to the presentation.
Sure, your worship, uh, members of the team will help cover some of the details, probably direct a read specifically on the position and uh the multi-cover solve information. But I just, given some of the questions and discussion previously, I thought uh it might be helpful to uh show council where we currently stand. After the decisions from last week, um, as you start to think about uh the additional requested information. And potentially reconsidering any of the direction on, on the previous positions. Um, so uh, council will just bear with me. I'll bring up a slide to show um approximately where we are. So at the meetings on the fifteenth and sixteenth, council made a number of amendments to add funding fractional groups uh that totaled. A hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, and additions of positions um that were above the base budget, uh, and you can see those here. And then council also made some decisions with respect to paid parking, increasing the expectation of revenue from paid parking. And directing um a greater amount of the paid parking revenue to reduce the tax rate. Um, as well as increasing the amount of use of the Financial Stabilization Reserve Administration. Incorporated two hundred and fifty thousand in the base budget, uh, and council gave direction to uh increase that by another two hundred and fifty thousand to a total of five hundred thousand. So the uh, the net uh cost of all those changes was an additional a hundred and fifty-two uh thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, because the changes to the paid parking revenue and the increased use of the Financial Stabilization Reserve. Essentially offset all of the other uh internal uh additions of additional positions. Um, so that um, a hundred and fifty-two thousand. Uh, on top of the increase that was already contained in the base budget of approximately a million dollars. Uh, brought the net tax envelope increase uh to one million, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars. Um, and this is where some of that discussion was before. Well, so what does that mean? Um, and administration has done some initial calculations um based on averages. Um, but we can report to you that that uh additional net tax requisition uh increase. Uh, would translate to approximately a hundred and twenty-four fifty um per year. On a nine hundred thousand dollar valued urban residential home or. on a nine hundred thousand dollar valued urban residential home or an increase in that home's municipal property taxes of approximately five point two eight percent. So while there is a greater increase in the net tax requisition um in that, you know, ten to twelve percent, when you actually take that to what does it mean to homeowners, uh, it actually means more like five point three percent. Um, so uh, are there any questions on this before we go into the additional uh items? I see Counselor Wilson there. I'll stop showing my screen so you may be able to see him, your worship.
Counselor Wilson?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, okay. So that that's interesting information. I really appreciate that because in reality, that's what uh um, the taxpayers are looking at. Um, the five point two eight percent on a household, so that that would then be residential. What then, I guess, would be the percent on commercial, like the commercial increase?
Yeah, uh, thanks. Uh, we'll actually refer that to Ms. Malamachuk. She's the one that was able to pull together these numbers. Of course, it, you know, uh, the commercial rate is higher and also commercial values are higher, but I believe she calculated on a five million dollar property. Um, and I think the percentage is is about the same. Uh, Ms. Malamachuk?
Oh, yes, thanks, um, Mr. Given. So percentage wise, yes, we're looking at about same. Um, on the five million, it would be a change of um urban wise, it would be a change of nearly sixty-nine thousand. Um, and rural wise, it would be a change of about twenty-seven thousand. Um, so basically, what was done was I did some preliminary work on um inflation as well as growth that has occurred in our assessment values in municipality. Um, it's very preliminary, um, but it is looking up to shape us into um a good board motion so that we um are no longer talking about this twelve percent, but more of five point three percent, or it could even get better. It's just, like I said, or slightly different. Um, but it it's looking better than what we've been speaking about. So the twelve point um uh six percent that we've been discussing is a change to um the budget, to the amount that we're collecting over the prior year. Um, with inflation, with uh market or with market growth or growth in in um, sorry, inflation is market growth, um, growth being through renovations or additional um buildings being built. Um, that changes the amount that we would be looking at collecting in that tax base. So um, very good news. Again, very preliminary, but um, good news going forward.
Mr. Given, the the slide that you previously had up cannot be shared? Unless somebody wants to wheel that screen closer to me, I don't know what it says.
Sure, you, sir, your worship, uh, certainly it can. Uh, I can um pull that out and email it to council right now. Um, out of the package, and they are going to maybe rotate that up closer to you. But what it does is it summarizes all of the additions uh previously, uh, but the interesting information is the bit at the bottom uh which shows the approximate increase in annual municipal tax on a nine hundred thousand dollar urban residential property. Uh, and that's the amount that would be. So a nine hundred thousand dollar house in the, on the urban side would pay an additional hundred and twenty-four fifty in municipal property tax in 2023 uh based on uh all those changes that council made previously. Um, and that's equivalent to an increase over 2022 of approximately five point two eight percent.
Thank you for that. Mr. Malamachuk?
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to also allude to um the the figures that I was speaking to were the amounts that would be calculated at the five million, but it's not the uh dollar change from the prior year for commercial. So yes, a hundred and twenty-four um dollars for an urban residential. Um, the change for the non-res is um from the prior year would be about three thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, just to clarify that, I was um stating the numbers that it would have been collecting.
If I may ask, and I am waiting to see the document a little closer up because I'm still struggling, but that five point whatever percent increase residential, um, that is after the cushioning effect of transfers to bring down the tax level, correct?
That's correct, your worship.
Yeah, I've got that screen now. Thank you. Um, and so what is, what is the total size of the cushion for 2023 right now? Using
Go ahead, go ahead, Director Malamachuk.
Um, are you referring um to the stabilization reserve? Only?
Um, well, either that or the transfer combined with the transfer from paid parking, if you're not copying that as part of the stabilizations or
Right. Okay, so at the moment, we have um five hundred thousand in the budget for, to be contributed from the um stabilization reserve. And then it was sorry, I have to bring up another document. It was then two hundred and we added seventy-five thousand dollars of parking revenue over and above what we initially spoken to and then transfers to public transportation reserve ended up being two fifty instead of four fifty. From the discussions that council had the, at the other meeting. So there is a difference of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars there that we had discussed on the November fifteenth or fifteenth meeting.
So if I may, your worship, I think, put another way, um, this, the budget at its current state uh is using seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to reduce the tax impact in 2023. So if council um reduced the amount of the, the use of the Financial Stabilization Reserve back to administration's uh initial recommendation contained in the base budget, that five point two eight percent would would increase. Um, it is at that rate because council, uh, you know, because cumulatively um, the budget as it stands applies seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of revenue to reduce the tax impact.
But yes, thank you very much. Counselor Hall?
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. A question for um potentially Director Malamachuk. Is there any way to calculate what we would bring in in part revenue if we increase by a dollar or fifty cents or like year round or like, I understand that, you know, using that that much from our reserve. We're not going to have that next year, but I also look at paid parking as a very good way to bring in revenue. And I just wondered, that is a calculation that can be done?
Your worship, through to Counselor Hall. Um, at the moment, there are a few um factors that would affect the calculation, um, being that we don't really know what the statistics would be during the months from November through to um May. Um, and then also, um, the discounted parking in parking lots being twelve dollars instead of twenty-four dollars if you decided to stay the full day. That would cause a little bit of of a problem in the calculation as well. Generally, we might be able to have a sense of being able to calculate it. It won't be absolute, nor is any of budget depending on, you know, if there's anything occurs in in the year, right? So anything can happen that will have less visitation, less parking, so. Um, but yes, we could, we could potentially look at that uh calculation.
Counselor Wilson?
Thank you. Um, so I really did like this uh setup uh with regards to uh priority-based budgeting. Although what it did bring us was um, you know, a laundry list of uh of positions, uh, a lot of them that were in the base budget and and were were um um, very valid, like we're saving money because of contracting, et cetera, et cetera. So I won't speak to any budget, uh, of the base budget positions. I think all of those are are great moves. Uh, but it's been, I haven't been ever on council where we've added more than two positions in in one uh year. And now we're adding upwards of twelve, I think, or, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but so I I would still like to see some amalgamations of at least the um uh, what did we call them? The um optional enhancements. Um, so I guess my, well, my argument here is that I think we should step lightly towards priority-based budgeting. Sure, sure, everything is a priority. Uh, yet I think fiscal responsibility is a, is, you know, the utmost priority. So um, I think we have a list of positions and it all are great. All will benefit us in in certain ways. Um, but I think we have to look at it and suggest, okay, maybe the uh CET, the uh what is that now? The engineering technologist, what's the C step for? But anyway, the engineering technologist, um, I'm suggesting that we defer that one until next year. Um, so I would be willing to make the motion uh that council, sorry, that committee um uh recommend to council to amend the uh budget representing that uh we remove the uh CET position um and to be considered in uh future years. And then I have another uh motion that I'd like to put forward as well after this one.
Right. Thank you, uh, Counselor Wilson. I didn't record all of that motion, but the motion is that committee amend the operating budget to remove the CTE position for this year. Ms. Acorn may have that recorded more precisely.
That's correct. The the CET, the certi- certified engineering technologist.
Thank you for that. Um, Counselor Waxer?
I wondered if you would consider a friendly amendment and uh to include a a direct administration to track uh engineering costs in 2023 so that we have good information in the future.
That's an excellent suggestion. Thank you.
I will take it and that is accepted as a friendly amendment. And it, I agree that it is, it doesn't change um the essence of the of the motion that does expand a bit. Any other debate? I just wanted to say then, um, I support the motion. Um, I have a different view of um the real benefit of priority-based budgeting, budgeting. I I heard you say, Counselor Wilson, that you expressed some reluctance to move forward with it, but um, I think that it is the appropriate move. My concern is that we have not yet grasped um what the real advantage of priority-based budgeting is. And to your point, it is not about making an ever-growing list of priorities and funding them at all. It is about prioritizing the service needs of our community and funding those that are at the higher priority and potentially eliminating those that aren't. And so I I share the concern that we have not really engaged in ranking all the services. I mean, we do have that big chart that council has not really looked at at that. But just as our residents face this every day and they don't know perhaps that they're engaged in priority-based budgeting, but they are. They've got a limited income and they have to somehow accommodate paying for accommodation for meals or utilities, some of which are at increasing at um municipal demand. Um, they have all of those things that they have to spend their money on and they have to make priority choice choices every day. And we should be doing the same. We should look at this list of services and decide what are priorities. And that doesn't mean we just keep adding to the list. It means we make priority choices. And so I I think that priority-based budgeting is the way to go, as long as we understand that sometimes we get rid of the things where there is no bank for the buck and focus on those that are the greater need. In this case, I I agree with with your motion, though, that um given all that's going on, this is a position that in the long run, um, I can't see myself supporting, given all the costs that are are increasing. If there is no one else wishing to speak to the motion, I will call the question. All those in favor? There are none opposed. That's carried. Counselor Wilson?
Thank you. And and uh just uh to clear the air, I I I'm not reluctant. I'm just uh tentative. Uh, and I I don't want to jump uh uh both feet in. I'd like to move forward uh re- recognizing that uh these are priority positions and we should bring them on at a certain point. But again, it uh uh priority is not all priority all the time, right away this year. And and that's only the only, my only kind of reluctance uh in that regard, but I'm not reluctant in in the the type of budgeting, the priority-based budgeting that we're that we're doing. Um, yeah, moving forward, uh, so in the same kind of vein, I'm like hundred percent supportive of the Planning Development Manager and as well as the Housing Coordinator. I think they're going to uh um prove to be very beneficial um for the community. Um, although I don't believe in uh that we need a full-time, or or no, we we could, we could use a full-time position uh with the Planning Development Manager uh this year, but I'd again like to uh step lightly into these new positions. I would hope that we can find a way to split uh the Planning Development Manager position as well as the Housing Coordinator, fifty-fifty. Uh, they would, it'd be a shared position, or sorry, it would be a um a half and half position this year uh with the idea that as we move uh closer to uh attaining uh land use and planning, that Planning Development Manager would then uh move into a full-time position as likewise. Um, once the Housing Coordinator position has uh actualized some uh uh some momentum, um, that I do believe could uh move into a full full-time position um in the near future. But in 2023, I would like to make the motion that we um split the new position, uh fifty percent Planning Development Manager position and fifty percent Housing Coordinator for the 2022 year, 2023 year. And uh, of course, we'll uh reassess um come budget 2024.
Thank you for that motion, Counselor Wilson. Mr. Given?
Your worship, if I may, uh, I I think from an administrative perspective, we just need to understand a little bit more Your worship, if I may, I think from an administrative perspective, we just need to understand a little bit more about the motion. So there are two different positions at two different rates and you're suggesting that we split one of those positions into two different responsibilities. Which one was it? The $151,000 position or the $69,000 position? That's a bit unclear. I would also suggest that they're pretty distinct responsibilities. And my suggestion would be if council wants to move forward in a more moderate approach with either of these that you either consider not doing one and doing the other or consider different ways of doing them. It would not be my advice, but it is possible to do the planning and development manager on a contract basis. And you know, if council wanted to fund, you know, increase contracted services by $75,000 and remove the planning and development position for 2023. That would be you'd save half the money, which I think it was sort of the intent here. But you would, you know, have a focused effort on planning and development. Director Reed has built up some information on the fund development coordinator position that council can consider that demonstrates a position that is working a number of different tasks. And for the planning and development side, we need a person who is a specialist in this area to focus on just planning and development. If council wants to take that more moderate approach, my suggestion would be not to try to bundle a whole bunch of duties into one position as a cost saving measure, but to say, well, rather than hiring for this person who would build the department, let's contract out to assist us until we're ready to hire somebody ourselves. So yeah, from an administrative perspective, I would suggest that if the goal is to save money, then a way to do that would be to defer the bringing onboard permanent staff for this area. Again, the administrative recommendation was that, you know, the reasoning behind having that permanent staff was because they would be your leader for that department for the next five to however many years as we build out that department. We won't get that benefit with a contracted staff. But a contracted staff would allow us to work with Parks Canada through the course of the next year. Would allow us to start to identify some of the stuff that we need to do. But I wouldn't have a contracted staff start any of the hiring processes for the other staff members that we're going to need eventually. Obviously, that just wouldn't be appropriate. They might be able to help us build job descriptions and a structure for the department. So there is work that they could do under that contracted model. But again, administration's recommendation is either you either do something or don't do something, rather than try to squish a whole bunch of things together. Because particularly with housing coordinator and planning development, very different functions, very different skill sets that we'd be looking for in those two different positions. And they're not particularly well aligned, although there is an overlap of housing and planning and development. And that's why the idea of having the housing coordinator report to planning and development manager ultimately may make sense. I don't see those two positions being something that one individual could be hired to do.
Go ahead, Counselor Wilson.
Well, you just said it right at the end there. In my in my eyes, the housing coordinator would fall under to the planning development manager. So how could the planning development manager not be able to do certain tasks that the housing coordinator could do? You know, if it's in the department, in their departments, I feel that they're close, more closely aligned than many of the items in the fund development position. But I guess that's, I guess we're not here to debate that. But I guess my 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 idea, I guess, would be the planning development manager of 150,000 could easily oversee some more assistance to the housing coordinator. Of course, maybe there might not be, maybe it might not be 50 50, I guess. Well, I do. Thank you, Mr. Given, for that information. I would probably support contract as well. I guess I would like to hear more from from councils as well regarding the issue before I, I guess, change the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Wilson. Counselor Demora.
You know, I'm going back and I'm flashing back to a couple of years ago. And this is the type of process I wanted to go through when we were hit with the pandemic. And unfortunately, we didn't have this pre-sight, I guess, to what it could look like. Because I think that we could have saved ourselves a lot of stress at the time and the community could have understood where we were working from. And maybe we wouldn't have had a similar austereous budget. But I think we might have ended up pretty close to where we did. And I think this is a very healthy process to go through in this matter. And had I knew how to speak better to it and convince council that this would be a better approach, I think we would have all been better off, you know. And the reason that struck me is because at the time I was making conscious decisions at home on what to cut in my expenses because, you know, we didn't have an income. So when when the mayor made reference to that, we're thinking about the people on the community that have their priorities and what they have to do. So I appreciate the way we're approaching this and Counselor Wilson, like this is, this is a good way to look at things. And I'm not here to say how to tell management and administration to run their positions and stuff. I I'm kind of, I'm kind of struck there with having to manage the the understanding around, well, here's, here's money for that position. Try to make both of them work. I don't, I don't know if that's our job, but we we are kind of in charge of the money. So if they could, if administration can make that work, that's great. I like the way you're you're angling it though.
Thank you, Counselor Waxer and then Counselor Melon.
I'm wondering if you, Mayor Ireland, CEO Given, if a delayed start, which could result in a saving, be preferable to contract?
Your worship for Counselor Waxer. I would say on the housing coordinator, that would be one that could be delayed start. I believe we had already forecast that as a later start in the year. I think maybe into the second quarter. I just don't have that information directly at hand right now. The planning and development work is ongoing right now. And the first quarter of 2023, I expect it to be fairly heavy. So that one, I wouldn't, I would see a preference of contracted service over delayed start because we do need that support now in terms of engaging in the discussions that we're having with Parks Canada.
I see you, Counselor Wilson, but Counselor Melon was in advance.
Thank you, your worship. And I think CEO Given has helped answer a question along the same lines that Counselor Waxer asked, and that was the housing coordinator, from what I recall, was beginning in April, but potentially that could be delayed to to beginning of July or so. Planning and development, there will be also a period of time for what's the best way of putting it? Advertising, interviewing, selecting. Practically speaking, that that position might not get hired until the end of the first quarter. And if CEO Given agrees that that's kind of the the way that could happen, we could, you know, shave a portion of that off by by scheduling it for a March 1st start or April 1st start as well and perhaps a housing coordinator for a a mid-year start. I think I think there is ways of finding some extra dollars in there, which would help in the overall.
Counselor Wilson. Sorry, Counselor Wilson, you are muted to us.
Sorry about that. Counselor Melon touched on it briefly there regarding, you know, the timeline it would take to hire a planning development manager. So in my mind, and I'd like to consult Mr. Given, would it not be better to or quicker to contract a planning development manager? Because it sounded like in the early months of 2023, we'll need to have somebody on the ground and running instead of getting somebody hired and hired and trained up. Contracting this position may move progress on the topic further forward more quickly.
Your worship, yeah, I think that's, I think that's a reasonable assumption. Again, I said, as I said, my preference would be, you know, I think in order of, you know, in order of best possible solution to sort of least desirable, sort of most desirable to least desirable. Most desirable would be to have a person to, you know, to be able to engage and hire somebody as soon as possible that we would have as a part of our team on an ongoing basis who would work only for us. And, you know, would help us through this entire transition that we're going through. That the next best would be to have a dedicated resource that is focused and responsible to us on a contracted basis, just for this phase of this transition, right? Which is sort of the the discussion phase with Parks Canada. And I think that then at least desirable would be sort of that trying to hire somebody under the expectation that they're going to do three or four different things. And so my suggestion would be if council, again, is looking at, you know, the the dollars and being able to support this priority area. A way to do that could be to defer the defer, similar to the CET position, the motion that you made on that, to defer the planning and development manager position to 2024 for further consideration and to increase the contracted services by $75,000 to provide additional planning and development support in 2023. So that would, you know, that would say, you know what? We're not ready for a full time position yet. Let's just see where this goes. But we appreciate that we're at a really important phase here and we needed more capacity to be able to effectively move down the path that we're heading down. And so administration, there's your, there's your additional capacity. You just have to do it through contracted services. So, you know, I think that that's appropriate. I think it still addresses a priority area, but it does it on a on a more incremental basis rather than jumping in with establishing a new full time continuous position immediately.
Counselor Waxer.
Just a comment that I I feel quite conflicted about this because I see great benefit in having a employee who is has seen the evolution from the start and who understands the unique context to Jasper. A great benefit to that for the long haul. But that balanced with the cost saving, of course, creates some conflict.
Counselor Demora.
Well, yeah, and you know what? I'm basing a little bit of conflict because I think we need to, personally, I feel like we need to show some austerity here in the sense that, you know, there's still some challenges coming out of the pandemic. I think maybe we we might have sped things up, you know, the last couple of years on certain items, but it's kind of tough. And when we go and pass our budget, hopefully in a couple of weeks, I want to vote in favor of it, regardless of where it's set on different positions. But when do I vote against things that I don't believe in? I didn't have an opportunity, really, I guess. Well, I guess I did have an opportunity to debate the ones that are already added in the budget. But it's it's going to be difficult to cut things out when we get to the deadline. So I'm challenged to support any new additions on top of what we've already accepted as, you know, our recommendation to council for the amendments.
I did see your hand and recognize you earlier, Counselor Wilson, but just to respond to Counselor Demora, today, right now, was the time you can register your, your vote about what goes forward for final approval and what does not. Counselor Wilson.
Couple of things, I guess, first off, would be a question to Mr. Given. Could we not do the same thing with contracting for the housing coordinator position? And the only reason I'm bringing that up is that we have hired contracting services at JCHC to move this forward on 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 items. Do you see contracting services better used to fill the housing coordinator necessities or the planning development manager?
Your worship to Counselor Wilson. No question, I would see contracted services better utilized in the planning and development role. The housing coordinator position is going to be ongoing work. A part of that bundle of work is managing our municipal staff accommodation, which has an ebb and a flow to it, but is an ongoing need even at this time of year. We have questions of whether somebody can have a pet in there, cleanliness, move in, move out. And so that's ongoing work that, in addition to the other things like supporting the new housing build and advancing the work of a JCHC in terms of considering alternate models. So we have an ongoing need for work on the housing coordinator position where the planning and development, I think we can reasonably say that there's this current phase and that's a specific task that we need somebody to focus just on that. And that phase will end and then there'll be a new phase that would start up. And that's where we might want to bring on somebody more permanent. The housing coordinator position is, I think, a position that we have needed for a long time. That, you know, housing is obviously the largest issue in Jasper and we do not have a dedicated resource to housing at all. We have a point three position and me, and you only get part of me to housing, frankly. But given the the priority, my suggestion would be that that should be an in-house service because it is going to be an ongoing need to manage our relationship with NPL Place on an ongoing basis, manage our internal municipal staff accommodation on an ongoing basis and to advance some of the large capital items that are in the budget with respect to site servicing on CH, the potential of a build on GC and the transitioning of the GCHC to a different model of governance structure. So I think that there's ongoing work there that wouldn't be well handled by a contractor.
Counselor Keller, happy.
Oh, Rich, man, just to respond.
May.
Well, I appreciate that information and having served on GCHC, I do agree with you regarding the housing coordinator. So so I would like to retract my my motion as it is, as it stands regarding the 50 50 position. And then I would like to put another motion forward, but I could hold off on that until Counselor Keller MP or other councillors would like to speak.
Is there any objection to Counselor Wilson withdrawing his motion? Right, there is no objection, so that that motion is withdrawn. Counselor Keller, happy.
I know it's a lot of money and it's hard to follow, but you know, I think this is my 10th year on council, or that ninth. And, you know, since we came on, I think we all ran on housing, all ran on land use planning and development. I think we need to take that step, we need to move forward, and I totally support housing position. You know, Mr. Given has our whole municipality run, and as he said, he's on his desk. And we're working now towards land use planning and development. And we're working now towards land use planning and development. We need to provide the help, we need to take that step forward. Honestly, those, those two positions, I could support. I could support increasing paid parking to help fund those. But I think big picture forward, isn't this what we've all been waiting for 20 years? More housing, land use planning and development. Personally, I think this is what we need to stay.
Counselor Demora and then Counselor Hall.
Yeah, definitely in support of the housing position and you're right. We all, at one point or another, have made a commitment in our campaigns to to support housing initiatives in one way or another. More recently, when we had conversations with Ben and the question came across when in reference to land use planning and development, is what we're getting substantial for what we're paying for the community at this point in time? Because I have a feeling, one of the reasons Parks Canada has been so amiable to start the conversation, they realize they can't afford it and they probably want to put their money elsewhere. So it's going to cost us an exorbitant amount on top of, you know, what we're doing now and sure, am I having second thoughts this far down the road when it comes down to land use planning? It gave me some thoughts to consider, so definitely in support of the housing one. I don't know if I can, how many steps I want to take towards land use and planning when the amount of taxation that it's going to take to facilitate that whole department is going to cause the community and in looking at what we're getting right now for what we're paying, it's probably a pretty good deal. So I'm not sure.
Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. A couple of things I can, I want to respond to Counselor Demora's comments, but the housing coordinator position I absolutely support. And when you look at our sheet you got, it's where we are lacking the most. And it's, I, we all hear it all the time, there's, there's a need for more housing in Jasper. Speaking to Counselor Demora's comments, because I had this question last week I guess you didn't ask, but it looked like it would give about $200,000, $300,000 more expense to municipality, but then I heard that's what we paid to Parks for doing this, like, does anybody know those numbers? Because I had a few people talk, ask me that, but you know, the story came out and it gets you. And it looks like it would cost the municipality a lot of money.
In fairness, the municipality is paying Parks Canada $700,000 this year for land rent, but that includes whatever planning services they provide. So we're paying already. If, if there is a transition to the municipality of jurisdiction over land use planning and development, then I think logically it is tied to a reduction of that $700,000. So the money is being paid, is the service being delivered in a way that satisfies our residents? I say it's not. They would rather see value for their money, that is one of our priorities under organizational excellence is value for money. The money is being spent, residents don't feel that there's value for it. There's a different way to approach this, so I, again, the housing coordinator, I'm supportive of that. I'm troubled with the planning and development manager at this time because it's hard for me to rationalize how a municipality without jurisdiction over land use planning and development can hire a land use planning and development manager. I, I am more inclined to have that service for the transition done through contracted services until we have actual legal justification to hire a manager for a service area that we don't yet own. So I, I see a bit of a distinction there. Getting someone in on the ground is, as Counselor Waxer indicated, of, of some value for sure, but as long as the work is done properly, somebody can step in and it's, it's not, as they say, rocket science, every other municipality in the province, including to some degree Ben, deals with land use planning and development in their community. It's a, it's an activity that is understood. And so for transition until we get jurisdiction, I am more inclined at this point to favor contracted services and hire the planning and development contingent when we have secured jurisdiction. Counselor Demora.
Thank you for that. I didn't want to get in a debate on that topic here today. And I didn't want to confuse land use planning and development with land rent either. But at the same time, we do pay for a service and, you know, I may be hearing different. Again, this is circle of influence and you have a lot of support in the community. Your worship, so I have to sometimes lean on your insight, I guess, to, to help me, you know, navigate through these processes, but I'm still inclined to reconsider those things, but I appreciate you bringing up the idea that it's difficult to support a position on a department we have no control over or have yet in our workings. Thank you.
Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, thank you. I won't reiterate what I've heard around the table from a few councillors. That we do want to move forward as best as possible and as hard as we can with land use and planning and attaining it. We do not have it yet, so we don't need a full-time position until we do. And I, and it's my belief that the person, the person that's going to assist us on the frontline currently 2023, attaining land use and planning, I do, I don't think that's the same person and I think they have different skills. So in my mind, I, I think we should stick with contracted services for the planning development manager position for 2023. So I'd like to make the motion that committee amend the budget to defer the planning and development manager position to 2024. And that we also increase the contracted services by $75,000. Because I think that's the number I heard from Mr. Given. So the $75,000 to provide additional support moving forward on development, planning and development issues.
Thank you for that motion, Counselor Wilson. For clarity, the motion is to amend the budget to defer the planning and development manager position until 2024 and to increase the allocation to contracted services by the sum of $75,000 to deal with contracted services in this area. Mr. Given, just let me confirm first that the motion is clear to administration.
Yes, your worship, my understanding would be that this would take out the planning and development position at $151,000, so that would be removed. We would come back in the presentation for budget 2024 to discuss that again, but it would be removed from 2023. And this, the second part of the motion would have the, the added effect of adding $75,000 in the 2023 budget for contracted services.
Correct, and any particular issues? I, I know earlier with the motion you, you needed clarity, but that was a a split position, this is clear enough, we don't need to go any further. All right, thank you, councillors, debate on the motion. Counselor Melman.
I'd just like to say I agree with the motion as presented and think it's a prudent way to move forward.
Any further debate? I will call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? There is one opposed, that motion is carried. Which again, to reiterate, only means that next week, in the, or two weeks from now, when we see the final budget before council, the planning and development manager position will not appear, but there will be an additional $75,000 in whatever line item it is for contracted services. Are there any further motions, Counselor Demora?
Yeah, just stopping to check to see if the housing coordinator one has been moved yet. Okay. Well, confusion there on my part is. It's math. Okay, so I have a motion that committee amend the budget to add $69,000 to address the position of the housing coordinator in 2023.
Your worship, sorry, maybe just a misunderstanding, that one is included. Council gave that direction last week too. So now it's about, really it's about today removing items that, you know, council on further consideration decided they might not want to continue with. Because all of the optional positions, well, almost all of the optional positions were, there were motions to include them last week.
And by last week means November 16. So everything that is at the bottom of the slide, that we brought that slide up today, that Mr. Given sent earlier, all of those positions were included by motions two weeks ago. I thought that was our homework.
So having said that, I just, going through the Hakone stuff, even though it's $10,000 and it seems small on this one, I did bring up the idea of if there were several of us going on the contingency or honorariums and, and all that would make up for the extra on there. Because I think the $10,000 just covers one person, so. I think through you, your worship, Ms. Valancek has something to add there.
Your worship, through to Counselor Demora, yes, that was considered when I was reworking the budget to accommodate the enhancement positions and the Hakone. And I was able to allocate enough for the per diems for council as well. So that would be included in your amount that you're seeing here right now. There was a bit more money to, from, there was $2,000 contributed in 2022 to the Hakone reserve. And there was an additional that will be contributed in 2023, so that offset the amount mostly. And yeah, I would be able to work that in, should council consider that option going forward into the 2023 year.
Thank you.
Yeah, that makes sense. If I may, how much was contributed in 2022?
2022, there's a $2,000 in amount. That was, yeah, and the same was planned for 2023.
Are there any further motions with respect to potential amendments to the operational budget? Which will be presented for council approval on December 6. Counselor Waxer.
I wondered if I could have this slide back again. But I had some concerns on silver second thought on the on one of our external grants, and that was for the Jasper Arts Guild. I have, I'm an enormous fan of that and it's very difficult for me to, to speak against it, but I do have concerns that we might, would, that we would be providing things for, for, in this, in this act versus operating costs. Because in my experience, to, it's relatively easy to access grants to, to do, to buy things, but it's very difficult to get operating dollars. And so I did have some concern on that. I'd be interested in hearing other perspectives.
I can speak to that and I, I share that thought and it went through my mind when we heard from Jasper Arts Guild on the morning of November 15. And I wondered really, did we want to pay for shelving, things of that nature? But on the other hand, I, I voted in favor of the inclusion on the basis that money is fungible, it's, it's just money, we're giving them money. If, if they spend it on one thing, they have more money to spend on something else. It's not as if we are going to direct that it we spent on shelving. They configured their needs and attributed it to certain physical items, but overall they have those physical items that need to be funded and they have operational costs that need to be funded. How they use the money is less of a concern to me that, as compared to, are we supporting a worthy cause in the community and I think we are, so. If we wanted to change the motion, I wouldn't change the amount of the funding. If we wanted to confirm that we would rather see it spent on operational costs to free up money to buy stuff, I would have no objection to that. All right, thank you.
I raised a sheet though regarding the audio in the Montparnais Hall. And I would like to let the committee amend the community development department capital budget just through $25,000 in the 2020 crew to improve audio in the Montparnais Hall. I think this is very important, both economically for us to, for that commitment to house more weddings and events. And I think it's very important that we have good audio in there for everybody to enjoy the facility, the opportunity and with the community. And for economic development for us.
Thank you for that motion, Counselor Keller-Harvey. If I may, through Mr. Given, to Mrs. Valancek, I presume, this would then be an indication that council wanted that project funded and you would come back to us with the source of funding in a couple of weeks' time. Thank you.
Yes, I can do that.
Any further debate on that motion? I will call the question, all those in favor? I can't see, there we go, thank you. Are there any opposed? There are none opposed, that is carried. Counselor Demora, just before I called upon Counselor Keller-Harvey, I saw your Counselor Demota, just before I called upon Counselor Keller-Heranti, I saw you.
I just, I wanted to get more clarification on the slide itself with the increase. I'm having confusion, the math, that is a hundred and fifty-two thousand on top of what our regular, what the base budget was based on, so. Am I to understand that the overall increase on top of the base budget is only a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars more than what was originally presented in the net tax envelope? With all these additions, with all these new additions?
Yes, when you, when you include also the increase in the use of the financial stabilization reserve and the increase in revenue from paid parking to pushing the tax rates.
And so the tax rate is actually a lot higher than five point two eight percent. This just represents what that'll mean to the average tax bill based on nine hundred thousand dollars urban residential, as it's there. So if I had a nine hundred thousand dollar house, that would only be a five point two eight percent increase on my taxes over last year. I know it's already been said, but can you get it clarified? Thank you.
Counselor Mellet.
Your worship, we had the motion to amend for the audio visual, pardon me, for the audio in the multi-purpose hall. We also have before us here an opportunity to adjust the capital budget with a caveat, adjust the capital budget to improve the projection equipment, and what I see in front of me is a caveat subject to secure grant funding. So in other words, if we were to make a motion to have this included in capital, it would be subject to funding. In other words, it wouldn't be necessarily in the tax envelope. Would that then show up as unfunded on the capital sheet? And administration would pursue funding? Or how could we execute this to try to do both at the same time?
Your worship, if I may, if council wanted to see this as funded in twenty-twenty-three, then you could say so, but in this one case, maybe being a bit of the exception to the rule, the council could specify that the funding source be external funds or grant funds. So if the grant funds aren't received, then the project wouldn't go forward. And I would contrast that with a unfunded project for twenty-twenty-three. There's no expectation of funds. Administration, you know, isn't necessarily seeking funds for that project, but it's something that we know that we need to do, but there's no money to do it. So in the case of the projection equipment for the multi-purpose hall, I think Mr. Reed and his team had done some work to identify potential grants. And so council could acknowledge that as, as a funded project, but that that funding source be from, from external, external sources. To make it clear that it isn't intended to be paid for from the tax base.
Thank you for the clarity, Mr. Given. I think that might be an appropriate motion to be made, to get it on the table and keep it on the radar and have the opportunity to perhaps, you know, have that project completed sooner rather than later. I feel if it doesn't get put onto the capital program, that it'll maybe disappear and maybe not resurface in future years. So I would like to make that motion so that it is included, subject to external funding, in the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Thank you, Counselor Mellet, for that motion. Believe that's clear, so it would be added to the list, but subject to external funding, if that materializes. Any further debate? I may have missed part of the earlier discussion, but is there any prospect of economies of scale doing the projection with the audio, or is the audio quite standalone? Director Reed, if you can answer that, go ahead.
I think, your worship, through accountable, there certainly may be, but it is not, the way we gathered the information and got the quotes, they were not contingent upon each other. So if it, if it were to work out, we may see some savings, but we did not count on that in our, in our information to you.
Thank you for that. If there is still further debate, I will call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? There is one opposed, that motion is carried. Are there any further motions? Counselor Mellet.
I would like to make the motion that the meeting continue beyond the four-hour mark, we're seven minutes from being a several four hours, and just so we can continue discussion.
You prefer that to a motion to adjourn? All right, a motion to continue, all those in favor? There are none opposed, that is carried. We are clear to continue beyond the next ten minutes. But if we can conclude, that too would be desirable. Counselor Mellet.
Well, at least I did that, as I did want to raise on everything which is on the council amendments, and we didn't have a chance to see it in the priority-based budgeting. And we also have, I believe, a council motion to get clarity for one of our committees, Community in Bloom. And what I'd like to put on the table is have a discussion about not participating in communities in Bloom this year. And, but I don't know what cost implication that might have. Certainly, it's, it's something that we've done for a number of years, but I'd like to, when we talk about priority-based budgeting, have the argument as to why it is a priority for us in a national park, in a community that we've made lots of strides to maintain our best of it forward, whether we actually have to formally be involved in that particular program, and would like to just hear comments from other councils.
Thank you, Counselor Mellet. Can we have confirmation from administration of what, if any, budget allocation there is currently for our involvement in communities in Bloom?
Your worship, Director Malincheck can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that there is an amount of money in the operations department, operational budget of approximately ten thousand dollars. The money is mainly utilized, I think, or has mainly been utilized in the past to send community members to attend the Communities in Bloom conference to learn about the program and about what other communities are doing. It does not directly support municipal operations or delivery of service here in the municipality. Natasha, was I correct in the amount that's in the operational budget?
Mr. Given, through to council, very close, seven thousand five hundred.
If I may, go ahead, counsel. The seven thousand five hundred dollar allocation is to whom? Is that a check payable to an external group? Do we have an agreement with communities in Bloom, or do we operate that as municipal function? Is there a rating?
Worship, if I, whoa, your worship, I can answer that. The amount right now is for more hosting events, and if members of our community who are participating in communities in Bloom were asked to be judges, that would cover their travel expenses. I understand that that's been, you know, used to pay for some judging opportunities out in Halifax and such in the past. It doesn't go towards our actual borrower budget or any of our operations work. It's not offset through that.
Thank you. Counselor, action.
As the counselor pointed to that, I have been working with the Olin on terms of reference and increasing the strength of that, of that of that commitment. I don't think we'd call it a group at this point. It has struck me in, in my first year as very informal, and I struggled to determine what, what, what it was about. But I would speak in one, one way in favor, is that it provides a venue to to profile the beauty of Jasper on a national and, a provincial, national and international level. And it also provides an opportunity to engage residents and organizations in discussion about the vibrancy of life in Jasper and how our downtown core appears. And so I think that there is some benefit, and, but I think at this point, it's quite unstructured and di- difficult to put your finger on exactly what, what the, what the organization in Jasper looks like. It's very well organized at the provincial and national level.
Counselor, your point?
Well, just to add to that, I think if anything, it does help us with the standard, and it does keep us in check and making sure that we're, we're working on those things regardless of how convoluted it might look on the surface. I think it, it does, like you said, give a benefit to the community. I like to see a little bit more participation, but I wait house development all the time, especially in time of Tuesdays.
Counselor Wilson. Counselor Mellet, you raised the issue. Anything further?
Well, I raised the issue that, as I said, I didn't see it in the profile, but it is something that we have a council member on, and we are developing the terms of reference, so I'm happy to hear the way that it's being approached. And, you know, hopefully, it will continue to have a benefit to the community. I just think it's one of those things that we also need to continue to measure, and it wasn't part of our matrix of, of activities that are important to the community.
I appreciated your tie into priority-based budgeting. Counselor Demota.
Well, there's no segue here. I just wanted to say that, you know, it would be really interesting to see what this would have looked like, you know, going into a priority-based budget based on what we need, or what, you know, administration feels we need without the paid parking income. Because I think, you know, a lot of the perception, again, and I've said it before, is that the community wanted to see some tax relief. Sure, it's kind of alleviated a little bit of the growth. But, and also, I think some of the people in the community wanted to see that go towards, forgive the term concrete projects, but something a little bit more physical. And yes, you can argue that some of it is. I just, I'm concerned about the trend. And going forward, like, it's, it's probably easier in our term right now to, to make all these additions and stuff, but I would like to, in the future, in the next couple of years, to really look at it, be a little bit more conservative with our perceived priorities, maybe, based on our strategy, and use that money towards some more initiatives that the paid parking revenue is coming in for. Thank you.
Is there anything else for council? Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. I'm just wondering, with a few of these positions being taken out, would we consider reducing the amount of the financial stabilization fund? Moving towards our, our taxes? A question for council. Check next. I have one more question. I'm wondering if this might be directed towards Director Malincheck, what would be left in that fund if we use the whole five hundred thousand dollars?
Your worship, to the Counselor Hall, I'm just looking at the spreadsheet. Now, if we are just, are we just speaking to the amount that was initially contributing to the stabilization reserve, or all of the other areas that might contribute to that stabilization reserve, being that we have everything being that we're looking at changing the reserve policy, that, that stabilization reserve would also have a potentially any operating transfers as well into it? So I'm just curious, there is the initial, that was the initial? Your worship, to the Counselor Hall, after removing five hundred thousand at the end of twenty-twenty-three, we would be looking at about a hundred and sixty-one thousand remaining.
Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Just my revelations were, we just cut almost two hundred thousand dollars in additional positions. What are thoughts on reducing our contribution from the stabilization fund? Maybe by a hundred thousand dollars, or do we want to do the whole? I, I, I'm not sure. I just feel might be worth a conversation.
It's a conversation that I'm happy to engage in, although it would be nice, again, as we saw earlier today, the, the impact of the decisions that we've made thus far, so. Whether or not we make that choice today, which certainly we can, we can still make it again two weeks from now. But I, I share with your, your concern, and my concern is that our entire community remains vulnerable to an awful lot of external things. There are all sorts of waters of external vulnerabilities, like fire, which interrupt business and so economics, but there's also the vulnerability to global inflation and potentially recession. There's increased costs everywhere, including utilities, as I mentioned earlier, and we have, as we've heard, some members of the the local population who are already experiencing food vulnerability. But everybody else is vulnerable too, even though they perhaps haven't yet hit that, that clip, and although it's great to see that a budget increase of over twelve percent can be reduced to a tax increase of just over five percent, the reality is that all those costs the reality is that all those costs are going to be there again next year. And the cushion keeps getting thinner and the drop gets further. And so if we use the rate stabilization fund this year to cushion the blow, the costs are still there again next year. And it is a concern. And at what point do those rising costs impact the vulnerability of our own residents? And one of our, one of our goals, our priorities is to prevent people from becoming vulnerable. And they become vulnerable when they face increased costs. And it's not just the tax costs. I did some calculations. I'll try not to turn this into a rant, but here I go. In a combination of utility rate increases and tax rate increases, I think from pre-pandemic, 2018, we have gone up about 47%. Those are costs that are attributed to our residents, one way or the other, through taxes or through utilities. It's less from 2019. It's about 39%, but it's still significant. And those costs, they, they, just because we cushion them with rate stabilization fund, doesn't mean the goal, they'll be there again next year and a year after. And unless we really got the priority based budgeting in the way I think it's intended to be, these costs become incremental. They will show up next year as part of the base budget and we will wind up debating again the priority of add-ons, but not the priority of where we're already at. And that, to me, is a significant concern. So whether we do it today or on December 6th, I I want to come back to the future, not this year's budget, which looks so much better when the tax increase looks like it's five point whatever percent. But our community can absorb only so many costs. And we are still in an uncertain time in terms of visitation and perhaps still a continuing impact of COVID and how that affects visitation. And as we've seen, wildfire can instantly impact income streams. So it's a, it's an important consideration, but whether we dive into that today or two weeks from now, I am unconcerned, but it's a decision that I want to have before we finalize these discussions. Counselor Hall?
Well, I appreciate where you're going. And I think that's why we got these, right? To really go over what we need for the community or what we think the community needs. And that'll have an addition to it next year as well. At what point do we not look at what's here and cut out some of this if it's necessary?
Counselor Hall?
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. I feel like this conversation really speaks volumes in just that paid parking revenue is very important to our community. And it affects, it affects taxpayers in a good way. And I know it was the first couple of years. I know there's caves to work out, but this is a good thing for our community. It also speaks volumes to, I've heard council promoted topless and all of us resort status like we're, yeah, at what point do we have to cut things out that we need because we can't, because our people can't afford it? Yeah, we just, you know, it's, it's again back to Alberta, Turin wanting to increase Turin by 2030 to $20 billion. This is huge. That will, that will affect us. And we're a very small town with, you know, like Mayor Ireland had said, our, our residents are vulnerable. There's people that can't feed their families. We have to make a choice. We'll cry, cry 30 days for them to either pay rent or, or feed, or eat. So, you know, we're seeing 300 people a week at the food bank. Yeah, there's, there's a lot to think about here.
Counselor Moore?
And to add to that, you know, you mentioned about Alberta marketing and increasing Parks Canada is doing that too. They stopped saying that their goal is to increase 2% per annum, but they're on their advertising. Come to Jasper and we have, we're the hub. And we need to, we need to have those higher level conversations. So I appreciate you saying that.
I'm sensing that this discussion may continue on December 6th.
Yeah.
Is there any other direction that council wishes to give to administration today? So that they are in position to present us a revised operating and capital budget for December 6th?
Next question.
Go ahead, Counselor Moore.
How hard would it be to factor it much as for all committee and the whole things for the foreseeable future?
Your worship. If you like, I think given a few minutes here and appreciate we're running past the lunch break. But maybe given a little bit of time, we could do a bit of calculation on where we've landed after the decisions that have been made today to be able to show that to council. And then you can decide whether you might like to give any direction on the use of reserves. I think in an ideal world, the real discussion and debate would be happening today. And you would arrive at a budget that you could be comfortable with. Then administration would go and revise that into a finalized form. And of course, if there was a need to make a change, council could still do that. But ideally, we would be done with the adjustments today to a, to a level where you were satisfied. Rather than say, well, we'll, we're not quite satisfied yet and we might want to maybe make some changes next time as well. It is challenging for admin to do that. And so my suggestion might be for council to have a chance to get something to eat here. And administration could take some of that time to do a bit of recalculation to show you an updated version of that slide that had the impacts to the 2023 budget. So that you could have a bit of a reference point about where you stand after the, the changes that you've made so far.
Is, is there consensus in that suggestion? An hour? All right, I will call recess. We will reconvene at 2:15. Good afternoon. It is 2:15 and I will call us back to order. Just prior to the adjournments, we were discussing the potential to adjust the tax relief from the stabilization fund and from paid parking. So I would invite us back to that discussion. And if any counselor is interested in making a motion or debate, we can do that. If there are any other proposed changes to the operating or capital budgets, this is the appropriate time for that as well. Mr. Given, I think over the break, some work was going to be done to tell us where we're at from this morning's discussion. So is there a document that you can at least share on the screen?
Your worship, there is, and I can print it shortly and email it to you. And in fact, if you give me 10 seconds, I'll do that. So you'll also have it in your inbox, but I can put it up on screen as well. Just one second. Okay, apologies, your worship. That should be in your inbox momentarily. But for the purpose of the presentation, I can put it on screen. And I appreciate that it might be difficult for you to see on screen. So if you need to receive it before discussing it, that's fine. I can report on what's here. Essentially, the top part hasn't changed. The grants to external community groups still stand at $152,250. The changes in the bottom portion reflect the change to the planning and development. So rather than 151,000 for the position of planning and development manager, it now reflects an increase to planning and development contracted services of $75,000. The CET position has been removed. And the $25,000 for the multipurpose hall audio is reflected as well. So that brings us to a net tax envelope increase of just under $1 million at 984,425, which would be roughly equivalent to an $80.82 per year increase on a $900,000 valued urban residential home. As you'll see there, the amount of net tax envelope increase is lower than the administration based budget because of that increased use of the financial stabilization reserve and the increased paid parking that's being applied to reduce taxes.
Great. Very much appreciated. Thank you. And, and Mrs. Melunchak for doing that work while the rest of us enjoyed lunch. Counselors, you have this new information. Counselor Hall?
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. So we eliminated a position that was $151,000 a year, a position that was 117. We've essentially added 100,000 with the sound system contract work. So 168,000 is what we've managed to save. I wonder if we could decrease what we're putting in the stabilization fund by that amount. Makes sense.
Sorry, I'm not sure that, if Mr. Given understood the question, but I, the 20 and 25,000 went on the capital budget.
Well, I, your worship, I do understand the question. The, the 20,000 for the video projection equipment is old grant funded. And so it doesn't have an impact on the tax requisition at all. The 25,000 for the multipurpose hall audio administration is reflecting here that we would collect $25,000 in 2023 to be able to pay for that capital project in 2023. So it's an in and an out, but it does increase the amount of money that we need to have in. I think I understood the other part of Counselor Hall's question of what if we reduced the, reduce the increase in use of the financial stabilization reserve by $168,000? Is that, is that correct, Counselor Hall?
Yes. Sorry.
So that would be an increase in the use of financial stabilization reserve above administration's base budget recommendation of $82,000. So council is, in essence, saying in addition to the 200,000 admin was recommending, use an additional $82,000 of financial stabilization reserve. Director Malunchak, can you run the number, maybe even just verbally share with, with council what that would do in terms of the dollar value annual increase on that $900,000 home?
Yes, Mr. Given. Sorry, I had to turn on my mic again. So what that would result in is that we'd be looking at a municipal change of around 5.14% with a $900,000 assessed value home that changes things by $121.15 annually. And non-residential, $3,365. Calculated at 5 million.
Counselor Demora?
Forgive me, I also forgot to reactivate my mic. I like the train of thought here. However, we're still kind of climbing out of pandemic and we've used a lot of that money from the province to crawl out. And I think not using all of it, but what we presented as far as the budget, I think putting a little bit more towards tax alleviation is prudent right now to justify our add-ons. And hoping that with the amount of money that we're going to see from paid parking, potentially in the future, start putting some money towards, back towards that stabilization. I know it's always hard to do as it is right now for future budgets, but I think we need to take a commitment that way. And I'm willing to spend a little more today because we're adding so much. That's just my position. Thank you.
Counselor Keller happy?
Senator, to Counselor Demora, you seem to be saying keep the money out of the stabilization fund and keep the 2% of the money somewhere.
Yeah. Yes, because you know, when you factor in utility increases, you know, this $80 on the, on the slide before that, is a little bit more sellable than even 125 or more. So I, I think that, that we're still crawling out. And because we've had a little bit of a hit with that forest fire and heated things a little bit, I think people are sensitive right now, although we haven't, I don't, I don't collectively, I don't think we've heard a lot of outcry on, on the presented budget. But I think some people are understanding this isn't finalized, right? We're just working on it right now. So I, I think, you know, taking necessary steps, committing to putting more in in future years. I'm willing to take more out today.
Mr. Given, through you to Mrs. Melunchak, just so that I am clear of this new slide that has just been presented. The $168,000 figure incorporates all of the add-ons less $525,000 worth of transfers to rate stabilization. So the 250 directly from the stabilization reserve and 275 from paid parking.
The initial slide or this slide?
Yeah, this, this is the only one where we've got the $168,000 figure. So.
So before we made the changes of the 168,000, yes, there was the parking built in, the additional parking. And then we reduced the And then we reduced the amount transferred to reserve for parking or transportation. We added from the stabilization reserve and all of the enhancement positions as well as the Hakoni and Hakoni had been built in at that point, but not quite, not yet the capital for the town system.
But the, on this same slide, the million dollar number. You're struggling. Well.
I just brought it up on the.
Oh, you've got it now. So the million dollar number incorporate, that's a net number, and that incorporates a separate $250,000 stabilization amount that was incorporated initially into the base budget. Correct?
Initially on the base budget, 250 was included, yes.
So I'm trying to look not at the net numbers right now, but the gross budget increase. Regardless of any cushion that we apply. Do we know what that is? I suppose I could add up these numbers.
Yes, I would have to do some calculations as well. I only have now the first budget that we had presented. And then the second budget that was amended by council and then the new changes that we discussed today.
Your worship. Excuse me, I wonder, I think the number that you're trying to get at is actually relatively easy to calculate. Administration in the base budget included using $250,000 of the rate of the financial stabilization reserve. So that would have to be applied on top. So you'd go to 1,250,175. And then there is the financial stabilization reserve that council has here currently at 250. So you'd add that on top. That would take it to 1.5. And then there's the 275 of the increase in paid parking revenue the council chose to direct to reduce the tax impact. So you'd add that as well. So I think you add the, what would that be, 775 to the 1 million? And that gives you, I think, the number that you're looking for, your worship.
I think so too. I just wanted somebody else to say it. All right. So that is the number, the gross number by which the budget would increase. 1.750 million dollars. And we have an indication that the utilities levy next year is also going up by about 800,000. So when, when everything catches up, by next year, we're going to be, by my calculation, two and a half million dollars beyond where we are now. And we will have less of the reserve to draw from. Is that correct?
Your worship, that's correct. Again, that's why administration's recommendation in the base budget was to be slowly drawing down or using less of the financial, weaning off of the use of the financial stabilization reserve. And that's why we were recommending that, that it go down to 250,000. The doubling of the use of that is pretty significant. As is the allocation of paid parking revenue to the tax rate in administration's recommendation that paid parking revenue was being transferred to reserves. And which would be able to be used for future capital projects that'd be able to sort of directly show the benefit of paid parking. The application of the paid parking revenue to reduce the tax rate is something that is sustainable. We could continue to do that every year and we should be able to draw residents' attention to the fact that paid parking keeps their taxes low. But paid parking doesn't necessarily build specific things, which I did hear some discussion at the council table about that. But really, those two items there are the most significant ones that are masking the tax increase or shielding residents and property tax owners from increased taxes in part. And at least one of those is, is one-time-only money, and that's the financial stabilization reserve. If council saw a fit, we could continue to apply paid parking revenue just to the overall tax rate. And I think that that's a sort of a subjective matter, whether you apply it to the tax rate like is proposed here, or do you put it into reserves and pay for stuff that the taxes don't have to pay for at some point in the future?
Thank you. Counselor Nevada.
Thank you. With the initial reserve and the additional from the rate stabilization applied to the budget increase of that 250 there that's in brackets, would that completely deplete what's in the rate stabilization fund as we see it? Through you, your worship, if not, how much is left over?
Your worship, it's here to Counselor Nevada. If it's full 500. Okay, so and I believe this is a question of Counselor Hall earlier. So if we're just looking at that initial contribution to that stabilization reserve, it was 162, something? I just have to bring it up again.
Sorry if I'm getting you to repeat that.
No, that's fine.
Somebody goes and makes a connection. So we had 661 plus in there, is this what we have written?
Correct. After adjustments being made for 2022, which could change in 2022, should it not all be required, but that's not. We're not privy to that information right now till the year end.
Well, the other option would be too, if there was a surplus from parking, either whenever it complete, when it gets finalized, even for next year, we could put that money towards the, the fund as well. Just thinking out loud. Thank you.
Counselor Melnick?
Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, your worship. Before we change this slide here, can I just clarify what the increase in utilities will be? Because we added $135,000 that needs to be collected through utilities for the waste, regional wastewater. So I just want to make sure we know, we know this percentage here now for general tax. But what is the actual increase in the overall for utilities that will be collected?
Your worship, through to Counselor Melnick. There's two different figures. If you're looking at just the change in budget, it's 7.15%. If you calculate it against the levies alone, it works out, I believe, we said 8.1% just on the, on the levies itself. I'm just bringing that up. Yeah, 8.1%. And that is after adding in the addition to, of the 135 to garbage.
Thank you. That's basically clarifying what I've been calculating here between the levies or garbage and the request for water.
If I may follow up on that, Mrs. Malunchuk, while other counselors, if there were questions. If we look at the utility summary by object, which is on page 28 of the budget that we initially received. So on that page, under revenue, the second line, levies, is it fair to say that the levy for 2023 and the levy for 2024 would each increase by $135,000, but the levy for 2025 would be unchanged? We collect that over two years, and that would be the end of it?
Yes, correct. So then we would see the rate ultimately go down again in 2025?
Thank you.
Well, and Director Malunchuk, just maybe confirm my thinking on this. Once we've built in, if we build in that extra 135 in 2023, it would continue into 2024. So there wouldn't be an additional increase on top of that. It would be built into the base utility levy rate.
Which is correct. So you wouldn't see a change on the 24 year because it's ultimately the same figure. You wouldn't be comparing a difference against the prior year.
Yeah. So there would be a 13% increase in 2023 and then no increase required for that purpose in 2024. And then there could be a reduction in 2025 when there's no longer a need for that 130,000 in revenue. So just to clarify, it isn't 13% and then another 13%?
Correct. But in raw numbers, the amount of the levy will increase in each year. Not a percentage increase, but the actual rate. And I will tell you, my interest is simply in trying to figure out what is in store for residents. As we've discussed earlier, there is one rate payer and all of this money comes from them in one form or another. So it'll be another $135,000 in 2023 year, because it's $270,000 that we need. All other things we need for.
Yes, over the two years, it is $270,000. You just necessarily wouldn't see the change on that area from one year to the next. Yeah.
Counselor Paul.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. I have a question. I'm not really sure who it's for, but is the idea with paid parking is that that money goes into reserves to pay for things and not to help with the tax envelope? Or by putting it towards things, the taxes wouldn't go up because we have money for the things or what? I just heard some discussion and I'm just curious, what whatever towns do, what are, what's the, yeah?
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit, your worship, for Counselor Hall. Yeah, I think, I think there are different strategies that different communities will employ. And it's about whether you recognize something as just general revenue or whether you dedicate that revenue to a specific purpose. And I think legitimately, there are different approaches to that. And different communities will land on, you know, one approach being good for them at one time or another. Administration had been recommending to apply paid parking revenue to reserves that would offset the cost of things. Specifically, I think in some transportation, in the public transportation reserve, creating a reserve of funds that we could use to start to build out a public transportation system, whether that's buses or bike share or whatever, whatever it might be, who would have some money in the bank to be able to expand on building a public transportation system. And then there would be a direct correlation between paid parking revenue and the improvements in the public transportation system. If we didn't have that money in reserves, then improvements to the public transportation system would come to the council table and council would, you know, debate those things along with any other capital items and decide whether they're worth paying for. And choose to vote them in or out of the capital budget. And then council could choose to apply paid parking revenue to the overall budget to reduce the, the net tax increase. So I think the mayor used the term earlier that, you know, money is fungible, which really means that it can be applied here or applied there having the same effect. So if you pay for $100,000 worth of public transportation infrastructure using reserves from paid parking, it has the same net effect of paying for $100,000 of public transportation infrastructure through taxes, but then reducing taxes by $100,000 paid for from public, from paid parking money. So in the end, the math works out the same. It kind of really is about the optics and about being able to demonstrate to the public what that paid parking revenue is supporting.
Yeah. Counselor Nevada.
Yeah, I think messaging is important there regardless. I mean, people just have to see what the impact of that is and, you know, and how much more we actually need to provide utopia. Which is essentially like, you know, when you look at this budget, it's there's a lot of us that are right now contemplating getting the thumbs up. So again, I still think because of we're hit for that two-week power outage, two weeks or so. I, I think we we need to like just be a little careful. Where, you know, we might get hit with something every year. Next year might be locusts, who knows? Right? But at the same time, I think we, we need to be a little prudent. Thank you.
Counselor Keller.
I do share, Mayor, I do share your view when you add up the utilities and 1.75 million dollars and another 800,000, like, no, that's something like 2.5 million dollars in one year. We put up the taxes 12% last year. And we can, for the future, continue to do this year over year. I think, you know, I understand that there's a need that we produce this year, but we have to mind for next year that we have really jumped 2.5 million and that we can re-approve this next year and that going forward, that I see the alternative revenue of parking help to address them. Because next year, we can just suddenly have the base of the 2.5 million dollars that we added this year and then add on another million next year. That's not sustainable. So over the years since I've been on council, you know, as Counselor Wilson said, we added maybe five or six divisions. Maybe in all the time, but you know, when you look Maybe in all the time, but you know, when you look at all the positions that were added in this budget, is this what we need to have excellence in our community? Well, then we have to be able to remain at that level for a while as we move forward. And that we have to be mindful that as we move forward, that next year, our community will be vulnerable, be vulnerable, more vulnerable. Next year, we don't know what's happened. The word is all state of. But we have to be able to use some of the paid parking revenue to maintain this for next year, in my opinion.
Thank you, Councillor Kilgore. Mr. Given, through you, to Mrs. Malachek, can you confirm that in previous years applying relief to the tax line, we didn't have formally a stabilization reserve, but we used COVID relief money and leftover most money? Neither, which is just saying more, I didn't say those words. Was that just on two occasions? The first year, we used about a million, and the next year, half a million, and what was proposed this year was a quarter million?
You're rushing against your approach.
And that is the step-down approach that had been described by Mr. Given earlier. And under the proposal that is before us now, we don't see a step down. We see a step up at the 775 unless we, unless we change that. Had you, in your wildest imagination, anticipated what might be the level of a stabilization reserve transfer in, for the 2024 budget?
My impact, or my plan for the 2024 budget with that? Yes, hopefully, the reduced again to 100 or 125.
So a continuation, a continuation of that pattern by, by having it?
Yes, if it was still available to us to use and other, there hasn't been any other uses applied to it, then, but yes, that was kind of the approach that I was trying to take, however, on, on obviously the decision of council with the reserve called municipal onto reserve.
And I wonder whether you could remind me again about the proposal to replenish that reserve?
That is written within the context of the new reserve transfer, reserve policy, sorry. Mr. Given, I have it up now? I don't have it up?
I, I don't have it in front of me, but, Your Worship, I believe the financial stabilization reserve was intended to receive one-time excess revenues. So I don't believe that there was any planned transfer to the financial stabilization reserve at this time. Again, that's subject to council finalizing that reserve policy. Certainly, council could direct that there should be an annual contribution to a financial stabilization reserve. That would be totally fine. But I think administration had, the current draft recognizes the financial stabilization reserve as a repository for windfall funds. So at the end of the year, if we end up with a budget surplus, that the budget surplus should be directed to the financial stabilization reserve.
Thank you. Councillor Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. So year one was a million, last year was 500,000. The plan is to get down to 250 this year. If we decrease our increase by the 1.68, or saving by 11 in those two positions, it would bring us to 332, which is a bit, still a bit of a step down over last year. And this paid parking revenue, I agree with councillor Kilgore, and at first, I, I thought this money should go to, because the only people that pay taxes in this town are people that own properties. So it's not everybody, you know, you might pay it in your rent or, but you don't see it in your mailbox. And so the idea of putting it towards things made sense to me, but I look at these positions, and I think a housing coordinator, a fund development coordinator, those two positions really relate to people that don't own properties or don't, you know, it does feel like that it is for greater goods. Like, I do agree with some dedication of our paid parking towards taxes each year. Seems to make sense. And again, what I've seen earlier, you just can't keep expecting our residents, our property owners to pay all this.
Councillor Delora.
Thank you, Worship. I know we're kind of bouncing all over the place at least I am. You know, administration, our staff went, went through the trouble of creating this, and all their departments and managers there contributed to this. And it's based on, on our six pillars over here for our strategic priorities. And the places that we're doing great on, from what I understand, are dark green, and then they get lighter towards red. The, the red indicates areas of focus that we're, you know, we can put more focus on. So I'm just, because it's in this list of ours, although small, I think if we, you know, when I refer to Hakoni, there's $10,000 there, and then another 2,000 that might be put towards there, and then 2,000 from last year, so $14,000. But if we find all these $14,000 pockets somewhere, we might be able to shave off a percentage of increase. But when I look at relationships, I can't think of anywhere else that Hakoni would fit on here. And then I go, and then our most important one that we need to be focusing on, based on our strategic priorities, our commitments to Jasper, is to continue along the path of reconciliation. So as much as I like to honor our tradition of our sister-city relationship right now in our climate, nothing on this graph indicates that we should be putting any energy or focus on that, right? And it hurts me to say that because, you know, it's, it's nice to be able to go and and visit our friends over there and, you know, nurture the relationship. But then there's other areas of focus, like in housing. Most of the stuff that's in there, some of it out of our control, but that's majority in red. And then you look at, you know, where the, the services are, like, we've, we've got some green stuff in here. So I think even with these positions that we're contemplating, we need to take a harder look on what's in front of us and really apply it. It's not an exact science, but it really gives us an idea of where our energies need to go with what we're funding. And if we need to create a lot of positions to fill these gaps, then, you know, that's, I'd like to see how green this turns next year, right? But at the same time, it's, it's really hard for me to, to look at a Hakoni line item when we're talking about optics. You know, we, we talked about optics on, on how we should use parking money. Are we in the climate to, you know, five less or more to go over and travel to Japan? That's, that's kind of something to look at.
Do we still have councillor Wilson with us? Councillor Melman.
Thank you, Worship. Looking at this document as it sits now and knowing where utilities are going, just going through the various positions that we funded, I, I look at this as a forward-looking budget as to how we'll improve in the next two to three years. And that investment in, for example, the housing coordinator, the planning and development contracted person to move us forward in that project and that direction, the fund development coordinator, I mean, all of these are meant to advance us into a better place. The fund coordinator, development coordinator, might take a year for us to get to a point where in a better place, might find some additional funding. So I hesitate to, to look at cutting some of the items in here. And I think we need to take a look at where we've got to here, that you know, the community asks, might be maxed out as we go forward. You know, we, we only can fund so much to the various societies and the various organizations. And, you know, that may be someplace in the future we'll have to take a hard look, again, looking at the priority base, how will this enhance our community? I believe the positions will do that. I think this will be a transition year, and I, I would hate to see us make any other changes to the positions that we've added, bearing in mind where we're trying to get to in 2024.
Thank you, councillor Melman. I am going to enter old realm, if I may, because you mentioned the position. Director Reed has been with us all day and did get a chance to respond briefly to one, one question. And you have, since our last meeting, November 16th, you provided some further detail about the fund development coordinator. And I still have some concerns about that position, but I wonder whether you could just confirm your, your current vision for that position? Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Worship, and through the council. The current vision is, I believe, quite well articulated, right? Public engagement, 30%, and that, that is directly related to policy work that council has asked to happen and directly related to further support for our community conversations. Food security, 20%, and those objectives are directly taken from the food security report. That was, if you will, commissioned by council and, and delivered a few months ago. Fund development, 20%. So that is straight up just finding more resources for us to continue to deliver the services and to continue to be successful in creatively funding the needs of the municipality. Indigenous relations, nod to, to councillor Demora for mentioning that. It is a priority of this council. It's clearly articulated. So we're working to support you in that. And, and grant administration, another ongoing work is policy B17, and that will require some support so the community can successfully take advantage of whatever that program becomes and developing it into what council expects it to be. And I, I would, I would articulate one key thing. We, we've spoken about capacity and something like, I can give you a clear example, the Indigenous Relations File. I'm quite proud of the work we've been able to accomplish, but it absolutely has been on the corner of the desk, desk rather, as ad hoc as opportunities arrive. And so we, we will be able to continue to do that as opportunity derive if the capacity is there. So on whatever, September 4th, when we were given that motion by council to create an Indigenous moment for September 30th and create some training for you, we did that. Because at that moment, in time, we had the capacity and we had, I think it's fair to say, good support from Parks Canada. So, so if we were to not have this position, Indigenous relations would sort of continue at that static level, would not further council goals. This, the same would apply to any of those five, five areas. And we tried to give you a better differentiation of, of the, the tasking of that position so that you could feel comfortable in the deliverables that we're looking for. But it, it is also, I think, important to say that when we amalgamate the department, we created an opportunity, or rather, we created a situation where the director has now half the capacity of the previous two director setups. So things like fund development, which was absolutely a crucial component of both of those directors' positions, is now, you know, all contained under, under my one position. And we have added, you know, a $14 million recreation renovation. We've added, or we've gotten to the point where we are completing the ice plant project. So, so those things take time. And, and this is a way to action and continue to move forward council priorities. So I, I think the way that, the summary that CEO Given put in this presentation today is a fair assessment of exactly what that position is intended to solve.
Thank you. You gave me 30, 20, 20, and then no more divisions. So.
20, 20, sorry, 20 for Indigenous relations, 10 for grant administration. And I, I did check that math several times. It certainly makes 100.
Does this imply that community engagement is going to transition from its current home in protected and legislative affairs to community development?
I, I will start by saying, public engagement is not technically housed anywhere. It is technically a function of corporate and legislative services. But there is no capacity in that department item. And with community conversation being one of the pointier ends of our connection with our community, this is an opportunity to capitalize on. In, in essence, it's a way to, again, fill that gap and make a position that is reasonable for us to staff.
I struggle, as I think I've expressed a couple of weeks ago, with the really divergent requirements of this compilation of positions. A fund development person and a fund administration person, you can see there's compatibility there. I struggle a bit with how they might have the skill set for community engagement. Potential, but I don't see it as being obvious. But the one that concerns me more than anything is the Indigenous relationship component. I think that optics really do add there. This is a program designed to not overmake it a book, but to in fact have this continue to be a bit off the corner of a person's desk. And I think we owe more to that relationship than 20% of somebody's time. And so I would rather wait and see a fully thought-through plan of how we are going to engage with Indigenous partners. And part of it is that, from my perspective, maybe we need some advice from an Indigenous person. And yet, I, I don't imagine that's going to be part of the job description, but I would rather see this broken up a bit. And even if a position remains, I am not personally satisfied that that's how we ought to deal with Indigenous relations. We recognize what a priority it is. But then to say we're going to beat our priority by assigning 20% by assigning twenty percent of somebody's time to it, it doesn't sit particularly comfortably with me. And so I, I wonder if there's a different approach. And it might mean a different position. I think for the time being, it might mean a contracted position until we can develop a plan. But if you can address my concerns, um, you, I can move on.
Certainly, Your Worship. And I, I do think that's a great question. Um, one of the things that I will point out is twenty percent is one day a week. An entire workday a week dedicated to this file is what we're asking for. And, and you will see in the deliverables, develop an Indigenous relation policy and strategy. We have just received a, a wonderful list of Indigenous partners that are willing to work with us. And our policy and strategy to date has always been to, uh, nurture, build, and encourage, accept, uh, all of those great words, our Indigenous partners help along this journey. And so one day a week dedicated to that, with the great list of partners we just received, is exactly how we're going to attack this. Yeah, one day a week feels like a lot compared to what, um, Ms. Redell and I have been able to straddle together. And, and I will say, your point about we don't have a plan, that is exactly one of the deliverables that this, uh, person will be tasked with delivering. So, so really, um, I, I'd be thrilled if Council were to say, you'd like to separate that out and make it its own position. I'm not sure that I would recommend that yet because I don't think we've got the data and the, and the program yet. But developing the program is, is the deliverable here that I think is the key.
Thank you, Counselor Demora.
Yeah, I, uh, I appreciate the steps we're taking towards priority based budgeting. And, you know, it, it just happens to, to fall on the merger of two departments and, and, and having to manage that. So, um, the way I'm looking at everything, you know, we got our service profiles and, uh, everything to look at our strategic priorities. We're pretty much doing the same thing we've always done, but now it's just like, okay, now we're prioritizing our add-ons as opposed to like prioritizing our overall services, which I think was the intent. So, and, and when you look at, you know, our budgeting in the future, this has nothing to do with, uh, with Ms. Malincheck at all. It, it's more of like our overall mindset, particularly, you know, on councils. When are we going to move away from prioritizing the, accepting the base as the, the zero base and then add-on and then prioritizing the new stuff? As opposed to what are we providing for the community as a whole? And are some of, and I appreciate some of the stuff that, that has been, you know, um, become more efficient. Administration's taken some great steps to do those things, but we're still going down the same path. So are there some redundancies and things that we don't need to be doing anymore? I, I'm hoping that administration's brought that to us, but at the same time, I'm not seeing it as a whole. And forgive me if, if I'm ignorant that way, but it's just, if it, it continues on to be a million plus every year, and that's the standard, you know, we have to look at what that's going to look like in five, 10 years from now. Because I don't think I'll be able for it to live here. Thank you.
If I may invite the Counselor to consider a motion with respect to, uh, the Financial Stabilization Reserve and/or a transfer from paid parking as tax relief. I think that's where we started the afternoon. I haven't heard yet motions to otherwise change anything in the budget which will otherwise come before us. Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. I actually have a question for Director Malincheck. When this came at us with the need since sixteenth of November, crap if I'm wrong, but I seem to recall the figure a hundred and ninety thousand is what administration potentially wanted to go into that transportation reserve. Was that a number? Am I? A hundred and seventy, maybe?
Yes, it's on the capital. Um, it's listed as a hundred and seventy, a hundred towards capital side of seventy thousand dollars, um, on the operating side. As support behind it.
And we decided or moved last meeting to put two fifty instead of one. Is that correct? I can't remember the actual, from parking rev revenue.
Yes, Your Worship, through to Counselor Hall. Um, it was initially? It was initially set up, um, that there was four hundred and fifty altogether, um, placed into the reserve from the parking revenue. And then it was changed to be, um, two hundred thousand instead. So it works out to be thirty thousand that would ultimately be left in the reserve after these, after the expense would happen.
I am going to call a ten minute recess. And counselors will work on motion during that recess. Um, it is, I think, uh, three fifteen, so we will reconvene three twenty-five. All right, it is, uh, three twenty-five and we are back in session. And may we entertain a motion or a number of motions from counselors? Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. I would like to make a motion that I haven't written down, so it's, comes out smooth. I would move that, I move that committee recommend to Council that we decrease the increase in the use of the Financial Stabilization Reserve to one fifty, uh, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So a decrease to the increase is what you're talking about. And it is, what is the net amount you want? You want to decrease by one hundred thousand to one hundred and fifty thousand in the additional use of the Financial Stabilization Reserve?
That is correct.
Okay, I am, I'm going to word the motion as committee amend the budget by setting the increase in the use of the Financial Stabilization Reserve at one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And for administration, is that then clear?
Yes, Your Worship, I believe so.
Do you wish to speak at all to motion, Counselor Hall? Is there any debate on the motion, Counselor Demora?
I'd be in favor of, uh, that change if we would look at decreasing our expenditures in other areas. And that would mean either the asset coordinator or the funding, uh, development position and/or home. So, but I like, I like the way things are because we can justify this merger that we pump orchestrate. And because right now, if we're taking away alleviating some of the burden on the taxpayer and then still adding the positions, I can't support that. Because that's just contrary to, I think, everything that we've done so far.
All right, that's fair comment. Um, it is not in the nature of a friendly amendment. Doesn't prevent you from making a further motion to otherwise reduce expenditures. Is there any further debates on the motion? Again, this motion will impact the budget that comes for decision later. I would prefer a larger reduction of the increase. Because I, I continue to believe that we are setting our residents up for more of a hit in subsequent years. The, the more we cushion the blow this year, the more it will impact in subsequent years. However, it is a step in the right direction and on that basis, I won't stand in the way. Any other debate? Counselor Melon?
With the motion that's on the floor, what would be the revised impact on, um, an average nine hundred thousand dollar home? I don't know if you've been able to, to do that calculation. I'm guessing it'll be someplace over a hundred and ten dollars to have an increase in municipal tax.
Um, I would just need a little bit more time. Uh, Your Worship, through to Counselor Melon.
Go ahead and take the time. I think it means that there would be just over four percent tax increase. And so it looks like about eighty five, eighty-six dollars. Where it says eighty dollars and eighty-two cents now. Counselor Kilherd?
I would like to see a higher decrease. Um, it's been a tough year on a lot of our business residents and, um, and I, I'm happy to support everything that's here in the budget. But we do have to cushion it, and I understand what you're saying, Mayor Ireland, the pain is down the road. But that's up to us to not let that happen. We really have to look at our alternative revenues. Isn't that the whole reason that we're collecting alternative revenues? Whether we put it into capital and use it, in the end, it's to reduce the tax burden on our community. And to me, you know, when it comes back in front of us, paid parking here in January, set the Bible, I'm happy to make the parking lots in downtown all the same price to increase some of that revenue to cushion the blow next year, and then we can have that revenue available for the tax burden the following year. Because even though we're going to put some money back into stabilization funds, once we put this in, we know overall between utilities and it's over a two million dollar budget. So that is, next year, we start at that base rate. So we have to be, realize that we've taken the step forward this year, but we have to be very mindful as we go forward that we have to cushion that in paid parking because that's why we brought it in. It is to benefit all of our residents.
Counselor Demora?
I know I already spoke, but, um, and I'm not just buying time here. It's just for a point of clarity. The reason why I wasn't making that family amendment, uh, was because I, I feel that those two positions that I spoke to are important to, for us to be more efficient in the future and, uh, and help, in one sense, garner some more funding for the community. So I think that's worth the investment. And I was merely saying that I, it's really hard to justify a decrease in the increase, uh, when those two are on the table, because I think they're necessary to kind of vault us forward. Um, and then having said that, I did have another point on, for clarification on, oh, so if this motion for some reason got defeated, um, it could come back, um, in another form with a different amount. It's just that specific change would get defeated. We couldn't talk about it. Well, actually, no, because they're not making a decision today. It's not an official decision, right?
It's a decision on the nature of the budget that is presented to us for approval or not.
Right.
On December sixth. It's not a final decision.
Right. And because we're, it's not a regular meeting, um, we're still allowed to come back to that within a year timeframe if we decide to change your line.
Is there any further debate on the motion before us? The decrease of the increase?
Your Worship, uh, no debate, but I think that, uh, committee had just asked for some information about what that would look like. Uh, and as administration, we're just trying to calculate that out. Um, and we just need to make sure that we've got the same bottom line number. Uh, so Ms. Meloncheck and I are just going, uh, back and forth on that right now. Uh, and I just want to confirm the intent of the motion was to, in essence, to have a council applied number of a hundred and fifty thousand of Financial Stabilization Reserve. Is that correct?
That is correct. So on the sixteenth, Council directed a made a motion to increase the use of the Financial Stabilization Reserve essentially by another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's now changed to one hundred and fifty rather than two fifty. So the total amount, as I understand it, from the Financial Stabilization Reserve to the 2023 budget will be four hundred thousand dollars plus two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars on paid parking.
Yeah, that's what I understood as well, Your Worship. Uh, so we're just recalculating, uh, based on that understanding. Uh, just half a second here.
We will give you the time necessary. Counselor Melon?
To you, Your Worship, I'd like to speak in favor of this motion, um, at the levels that we are, using the Stabilization Fund and the increase in paid parking. It still leaves us with the opportunity for, uh, a stabilization fund for next year as, as we need it. We also, al- also don't know what amount of surplus we might have of this operating year, which could also go into the Stabilization Fund. I think it's prudent that we, that we spread out the increases in a, in a timed manner, not have spikes. Um, and, you know, with this, um, in and around, if we're going to be in and around the four and a half or five percent mark, four and a half percent mark, I think that's well in keeping with where inflation is, with what we're trying to achieve through this priority based budgeting, the positions that we're adding, um, the, the, the discussions that we've had regarding better efficiencies, um, and the potential for additional revenue through some of the, um, positions that we're adding. So I think we've had a good three days now of, of discussion and presentations. And, and I'm comfortable where we're at with this reduction to the one hundred and fifty increase instead of two fifty and the overall contribution of the four hundred and fifty, I'm sorry, four hundred thousand dollars of the Stabilization Fund.
Thank you, Counselor Melon. I see busy heads still down.
I'm a little stuck here. Sorry, worship. So I'm a little stuck here because I have other questions about other things that might affect this. So we have to do that, but I don't want to talk about it. I just don't want to affect it. It's too much of a distraction.
Well, they are doing their work and we are here to debate the budget. So if there is something else that you wish to raise that may change the budget that is presented to council two weeks from now, then this is the time.
I'm trying to be respectful to the process. I spoke and I don't want to keep pushing my agenda because I don't have one. But if we decrease this, I feel like I'm going to be forced to at least make some motions to decrease some in some other areas, whether the position definitely going to to make a motion to to decrease Hakone and I might even do it further than the extent it's there. If that if the opportunity is there, there's an extra $4,000 that we're committed to that already. Putting elsewhere that someplace I'm being built. You know, and and this is kind of like a buggy and horse thing because if the proposed decrease and the increase wasn't on the table, then I don't think I would address the other positions. So ultimately, we're not making an official, this is a final decision today, but that's kind of the commander of the law.
Welcome back to that. Mr. Given, go ahead.
Your worship, thanks for that time, Mayor and Council. So thanks to Ms. Melunchuk's quick work. I can show you an updated slide. And I will describe what you're seeing there because I know from that monitor far away. So this is, again, shows those community group contributions has removed the planning and development manager position, replaced it with contracted services, has removed the CET position, certified engineering technologist, has reduced the additional use of financial stabilization reserve to just 150,000. And the total impact of all of that would be a increase in municipal tax on a $900,000 house of $104 dollars and eighty two cents per year, which is approximately 4.45%.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Counselor Hall?
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. I just wanted to speak to Counselor Demota's comments about the decrease of the increase. The reason I made that motion is because we did cut two decisions, two big ones to the tune of $168,000. So just just be clarity free.
Counselor Melnick, you had asked for that calculation that has just been delivered. Did you have any questions now that you have those figures?
No, it verified in my mind where I thought it would be. And I think it's a good way of using a benchmark that we've been using through this process, especially today. To go back to as we make these changes, how it affects a $900,000 home. It's not necessarily an average home here. Most homes are probably anywhere between six and nine, and there are a number that are, of course, over 900,000. But it is a reason of what and how it'll affect the tax bill over the course of a year. And 100 and and $104 is is not that large an increase. And I'm sure the the business portion of that would be probably someplace in the, I guess, $2,400 range. Which is which is given where, I believe, Counselor Keller, he said the community's come through a bit of a tough time. We've had other utility increases in in electricity and natural gas, which are beyond our control. And we've been able to absorb the policing costs in this that are that are increasing in the community, which we can't control. So at this point, I think we've reached a good balance as to what increase we can go to the public with. Given that we're trying to move ourselves forward with these other positions to again, look towards where we're going to be in 2024.
Is there any further debates with respect to a motion that was originally put on the table by Counselor Hall? If not, I will call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? There is one opposed that is carried. So Counselor Demota, you had alerted us that you may have additional motions and for all councils. We are here. We were here November 15th and 16th to debate this and make motions. We are here. We have been here for several hours to make further motions and amendments to the budget. So this is the time. It is not necessarily the last time, but it is the best time because we will expect administration to come with a fully formed budget based on these discussions in two weeks, upon which we will be in, sorry, two weeks. One week? Oh, one, sorry, yes. That close to the end in one week, which will be for council approval. And although you're not committed to vote in any particular way, it is anticipated that there will be a vote and if we won't work done by administration, now is the time to tell them. So if there are any further proposed amendments, let's deal with them. Go ahead, Counselor Hall.
I have a question for administration and primarily probably this manager, Director Malin. Sorry, I think my microphones get tired of me talking. Is it possible to defund Hakone from this position right now? Because I was talking a little bit about, we have 10,000 that's proposed here, and then we have another 4,000 committed, 2,000 that's already in the budget for this year, and then 2,000, which was carried over before. So that's 14,000. So if we completely defund that, is that possible to do that? Like, that'll affect our overall budget by probably a few pennies.
Yes, your worship, through to Counselor Demota, it's possible to remove it. Who is that? And we can remove it if it is the will of council, should it be a motion?
Well, we, I'm sorry. But we already have $2,000 carried over. Could that be used for something else within council budget? It's already there.
So the reserve has been set for 2,000 annually towards Hakone. But it will now be going to, once the policy is, if the policy is approved, to a generalized, more generalized area. So council may choose to use it how it to its wishes, I believe. So it would just stay within the reserve until it was, it would be used. So it would go back to the reserve rather than be allocated to the actual trip.
Okay. So my motion is that committee, I'm just going to change it then, that committee amend the budget to remove Hakone sister city relationship in the amount of $10,000 in 2023.
Counselor Keller?
I can't support that. I think we should leave 10,000 in there. It doesn't specify that we're going to Hakone. What happens if Hakone comes here? I think like it's 10,000. It's my mood. There's nothing, none of us have voted to go to Hakone. And that's basically 10,000. We don't want to cover seven counselors to go to Mayor and counselors to go to Hakone. It's so my mood. I think she left in the budget. And next June, Mayor June, we're hosting Alberta-Japan swimming apartments here. And we may have some space there in 2023. It's it's a very small amount. And I think we should be willing and if we call Hakone or Alberta Japan swimming, if you want to earmark it that way, but no, there's nothing saying we're going to Hakone next year. It's just there as a reserve. Shouldn't we need to use it?
Might I be made clear, Mrs. Melunchuk? The $10,000 that is under discussion shows on this latest slide as having an impact on the ultimate tax rate. So is the intent to take it from reserves and then replenish the reserve? Is that why there's a tax implication? Or if it's already in reserves, how does it have an impact on the tax rate?
Your worship, maybe I'll I'll start. What you saw reflected on that slide was administration's understanding that there was a motion earlier made to add an additional $10,000 in 2023 in addition to any other amounts that might have been accrued or contained in reserves to be expensed. So there is a direction to add an additional $10,000 above the base budget numbers.
Thank you. Counselor Melnick?
Thank you, your worship. And we just took $100,000 out and it had a $24 impact. We take another $10,000 out. On an average $900,000 home, it'll make a difference of $2.40, give or take by rough calculations. And they're easy numbers to, you know, one ten, the $24 increase now becomes two $2.40 less. So it's it's a small dollar amount. I think the principle involved with the relationship with Hakone doesn't mean we're going to spend it. It means we have it available should we have a visit.
Is there any further debates? I will allow you, Counselor Demota, to close today if you wish.
Thank you. I appreciate that. But, you know, sometimes it's you gotta make some some tough calls. And to me, it's more of an optical thing. It's more optics. And while we're in this forum and we're making a debate, we're contemplating justifying that trip. And that was the extra 10,000. When we were talking about it, it wasn't if they were coming here, it was if we were going there. So you know, I I respect where everybody's position is. I'm just reflecting that if we're going to be making changes, and it's too bad because you know, it would have been nice to make changes to the parking and the and the stabilization. Maybe at the end, but we wouldn't, maybe no one wanted to debate the other ones. And that's why I was in the once we got there, if we didn't ax any of the positions proposed or change, make changes to them. Then they're probably, you know, would have justified that increase entirely. But at the same time, I I'm not ready to see to see those. And that includes Hakone thing. So I'm not, I'm not withdrawing a motion. Yeah, it's a big issue.
And to be clear, there was no request that you do that. All right. If there is no further debate, I will call the question on Counselor Demota's motion. All those in favor? Those opposed? That motion is defeated. Are there any further motions related to anything in the 2023 operating budget or the 2023 capital budget? Again, we are gathered here to debate the budget now so that we have a finalized version that comes before us a week from today. And staff needs some time to put that together. So if there are any other changes, any other positions that any counselor feels compelled to make a motion regarding, now is the time to do that. Counselor Demota?
Well, I know that you're entertaining counselors to that board and it's it's not fun being polarized a lot of the time. So I've already made my position clear and I don't want to be a stick and let to administration. For me, it would be more of a process that somebody's at least making an effort to to go a little further. And I don't, right now, I'll I'll take another week to contemplate it. But I don't want to make a move, although I desire to to see that increase go down a little bit. I think those positions are necessary. And if the rest of council is comfortable where we are right now, then I'll support that motion.
Thank you for that, Counselor Demota. Just before we leave, I have one very general question. I presume Mr. Given threw you to whomever on your staff. This matter has now been in the public realm for at least a couple of weeks since the agenda for the November 15th and 16th discussions was first posted. What, if any feedback has been received through our official sources? I invited people at the time on the 15th and 16th to make comments either on the feedback forum on our website or to info@jasperalberta.ca. And I'm just wondering whether anything has been received.
Your worship, I haven't received anything. I haven't had anything brought to my attention, but I would ask if either Director Nadal or Emma, who see those accounts more regularly, are aware of anything because I'm not.
Thank you. See, you know, given through to Mayor Ireland, Ms. Acorn has confirmed that we have not received anything either through the website or the info app email address.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that clarity. Is there anything further, Counselor Melnick?
Just a point of clarification in any capital projects for 2023 that are unfunded. Should funding become available? Will it come to council to approve that particular item? Or will administration, if they can obtain funding, go ahead with the capital item in 2023?
Your worship, for Counselor Melnick, we would need an amendment to the budget because we would have a funding source for that project. So while it wouldn't have a tax impact, if we found some external funding source, we would come to council for approval because technically it's an amendment to the budget. And since it's your budget, we can't make that amendment without your approval.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you for the question. Is there anything further? Counselor Demota?
For, you know, future considerations, I just, this might have been clarified earlier, but let's say next year there was a surplus somewhere, whether it like on the taxation side, and we still needed to refit old garbage cans or garbage bins. Could we transfer some of that over to supplement some of those changes that are needed? Because I'm tired of hardening supplement some of those changes that are needed? Because I'm tired of hardening, kicking the can down the road, but you know, there are certain things that are necessary for not the shiny stuff that's in the public eye, but that really facilitate, you know, our overall wellbeing. So I just if we're allowed to cross the lines operationally with utilities and vice versa, those there are still some gray lines there. I'd like to entertain that down the road.
Mr. Given?
Your worship, well, a couple, a couple of different aspects to that, Counselor Demota. I think first is the overall reserve strategy and the reserve policy definitions that are in front of committee. When council approves those, that gives us direction on what to do with surpluses. And if a surplus from the tax side goes into a financial stabilization reserve, council could choose to fund something on the utility side with the financial stabilization reserve. But that would end up being, well, practically speaking, it would be a tax subsidy of utility operations, but council might choose that to do so. And it's a legitimate choice. We certainly wouldn't be the only municipality in the world that would subsidize utility operations with tax dollars. It hasn't been our practice, as Ms. Melnichuk goes to great pains to show, we try to have that zero balanced budget in the utility side of the ledger. But it is possible. Again, we wouldn't make any of those, we wouldn't sort of apply any of those funds in that way without coming and seeking express council approval. I think the most likely thing we would do if we have a surplus at year end is report that surplus to you. And if there is no if we haven't approved reserve policies that would sort of set the rules for what we do with surpluses, then we would seek guidance from you on what you want, you know, on a case by case basis. So the reserve policy is a chance for council to give that direction in advance. And if we don't have that direction in advance, then at the time when we have a surplus, when and if, we would come to you and seek your guidance at that time.
Thank you. Just wanted to see. I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you. I think after seven hours last lunch, we are in a position where we could have a motion to adjourn. Counselor Keller, all those in favor? There are none opposed. We are adjourned. Thank you all. That concludes part of the budget. Did we miss a motion?
Well, I I was just going to say, if you made a motion to adjourn, what you, the last kind of closing motion of this would be that committee refer the budget to council for consideration. Just like with any other committee sort of business, you've done all the work here now, and then it's you passing it to yourselves to the next meeting. I mean, I I don't know that we necessarily need to have that, but it has been the way that we've done all of our other sort of committee to council referrals.
All right. Now you're gone. Mr. Given is gone. He's he scolded me and then he left.
He dropped the mic at him.
All right, we're adjourned. Yeah. A motion. Counselor Hall?
I move that committee recommend council approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five operating and capital budgets as amended.
Any debate on that motion? I will call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? There is one opposed. That is carried. That will come to council on December sixth with a recommendation from committee. Again, it's only a recommendation. All right, again, I will go back to Counselor Keller's motion to adjourn for real this time. All those in favor? There are none opposed. That is carried. We are in fact adjourned. Thank you all.